President.
And Councilman Lavaca.
President.
All right, we are moving right into approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Cock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Moving into the consent agenda, items one through six. Do we have discussion on this?
Madam Mayor, on item six, I'd like to discuss.
You'd like to pull item six?
Yep.
Okay. Does anybody else want any other items pulled? If not, do I have a motion to approve items one through five?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilman Henderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Can we jump right into that? Are you ready to do that, Councilman Lavaca?
I was just, I didn't get an email from our attorney Nikki about the Department of Commerce. And I kind of was expecting that. And then, I think we'll vote it through. I do think everybody agreed that it was a good plan and awesome. But we did get an email about why that was in there, why the RCW is in there. But it was an attorney email, and at the bottom it says Attorney Client Privilege. So I'd just like to make a motion to make that a public email, just that one.
All right. We can make a motion to do that. So you're talking about the one that we had at the work session? All right, where it was talking about 42, RCW 42, I can't remember where.
Yeah, it's just kind of explaining the logic behind it.
Yeah, we can make that public if you like. So do you want to make that motion?
Yeah.
I will second.
Okay. So, I wish I had it in front of me so that I could call out the, do you have it in front of you, Councilman Lavaca?
The email or the?
The email or the motion?
Maybe you can just describe the email at the top of the header and?
Pull it up here.
And I do believe we do have letters, do we not, from Nikki?
Nikki's online, so.
Okay.
Yeah, probably best effort.
Nikki, do you have those letters for us, or the letter that was spoken of at the last meeting?
So I sent an email to Commerce on Monday, and I got a response from Commerce. Actually, I sent it earlier than that, Friday. I got a response from Commerce that I had some concerns about because the language implies that it's longer than 50 years. It says that local governments have the authority to spend 1,590 funds on many things housing-related, however. And I have copied the statute below. It is for things that are generally permanent affordable housing. 50 years generally aligns with the low-income housing tax projects and the Housing Trust Fund projects. But I believe the intention for these funds to be used for public good are for enduring investments in affordable housing. And then there's another paragraph. So I responded, and I said, if I am reading this correctly, Commerce's position is that it is least 50 years, but likely in perpetuity. And Commerce has not responded to my email.
Okay.
I didn't want to send that along to council until Commerce clarified their position that it's at least 50 years, but more likely in perpetuity.
Okay, very good. I can appreciate that. I think the council can too. So, we can have all the documentation then when it does arrive and you have it in hand, correct?
Yeah, thank you very much for doing that too, Nikki. So the email was 1,590 funding.
So, the motion then would be that you would like to have the email from the October 2nd work session, the 1,590 funding made public, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that's a motion by Councilman Lavaca. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So at the same time, do you want to approve item six?
Yeah, that'd be great. I'll make a motion to approve the RFP Guiding Principles, House Bill 1,590 funding.
Okay. And with that, you would like included then, the letter, the 1,590 letter from the October 2nd work session? Included in that?
It doesn't need to be included in the bill, or the package that Charlie's preparing. Just be able to be made public. So if we want to answer questions or describe where the logic was, we can do that without the disclosure that we're not allowed to.
Okay, so that sounds like two separate motions then. I'm sorry, I thought maybe you were wanting it to be placed in the packet. Okay. So, all right, the first motion then is actually the one where you want that letter to be made public. Said letter, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, moving on then to item six. In the consent agenda. You?
I'll make a motion to approve the RFP Guiding Principles, House Bill 1,590 funding.
So you didn't have any other concerns or questions regarding that?
No, that was, it was the letter from the Department of Commerce, and then be able to help, you know, understand and explain that.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second then for that?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Cock to approve, under consent agenda, item six, the RFP Guiding Principles, House Bill 1,590 funding. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, all right, motion carries. We do not have any special guests or presentations tonight that I am aware of. So moving on to item number G, City Administrator Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson and the council. I have this evening just a quick update on District Eight negotiations, where we are with them. And we did have a meeting a couple of weeks back. And I've included a District Eight negotiation update document that I'll speak from a little bit in your packet. And it basically is not what I thought it was, which is really unfortunate. But I'm going to just go ahead and speak to it. My apologies, I think I uploaded the wrong document. These are the guiding principles from the council. So, the current contract, so I'm just going to go one by one.
Would you, are you talking to, oh, never mind. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's just not, I don't, I think I uploaded the wrong document. I had a nice table in there. But I'm just going to go one by one down through the bullet points, and I'll provide updates on those. And I'm going to look to Chief Wagner as well. Yeah. If Woody could go to the next page, I think it's, and those documents are the same. There it is. Yeah, that's actually the original though. Oh, okay. And I had a separate column on the right that had some of the other discussions that we're having. But it's pretty straightforward. So between Chief Wagner and I, we'll just go ahead through these briefly. But we just wanted to update the council so there are no surprises, and let you know that there are a few things that have changed as we've gotten into discussions with District Eight. So the general terms of the current contract, there are some, we're asking for a markup from District Eight. We haven't seen it yet, but there are some things District Eight would like to remove from the current contract that we currently do in partnership with them. For example, one of the things we do are rig checks. And Chief, you may have a bit of a rundown of exactly what those things were, but that's the big one that I recall.
Yeah, I think the biggest things there were, every Tuesday and Thursday, our crews go up to their stations, rotating from the District Eight North, which is up off of Prairie Road and Highway Nine, to do the rig checks on their apparatus. And then on Thursdays, they head east to Lyman and Pumpkin Center and do all the rig checks on those two stations. They were, in order to save time, energy, and money in this contract going forward, that was one of their concessions to take those off the table in the future. As well as, we provide emergency first response services to their entire 53 square miles of district outside of the city limits. Well, Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, all the time, they wanted to provide those services to the north end, which would be above Mosher and east of Minkler off of Highway 20 themselves, Monday through Friday. So, which, for us, the majority of their call volume, if, I handed out a little handout for all of you that we'll include in the packet for Serena to add to as late materials. We have been averaging about 700 calls a year, total responses with them in those areas. And we're still going to be handling about 550-plus in the District Eight South areas that don't include those Monday through Friday responsibilities. So, they're trying to make some concessions to kind of meet us in the middle to make it so it's more fair and equitable for both agencies, so we continue moving forward with the contract.
They've also asked for a two-year contract instead of a three-year contract. That's the second bullet. And then, in terms of volume-based contract, they're asking for a fixed contract, fixed cost contract. And we're pushing back on that and holding to what's in this council guiding principles. Wanted to let you know that the first two changed somewhat slightly. So, on those, wanted to let you know that. And the area, as the chief is describing, the specific areas for service, they're making some requests around, you know, shifting those around, which will change the number of calls that we run for them. And on a call, a volume-based contract, obviously that would lower the revenue that we would collect. But we would also have fewer expenses. We're also sticking to the numbers that we shared with you previously before these guiding principles were approved in terms of the cost per call. So, I believe Chief may have included some of that in here. He did. In 2024, cost per call is really the number we're focused on at the moment. The revenue that we were looking at, at that cost per call, in 2025, would have been over 700,000. With the adjustment in calls that they're asking us to respond to in different areas, it would come down to between, I think it was 560,000 is what we've got in the budget right now. So that's where we are on that topic of continuing with a volume-based contract, continuing to focus on full cost recovery as well, minus our EMS expenses, because those are reimbursed by the county. And then, continuing to push on the automatic annual adjustments for CPI, given the history. So we're holding those three things at the table, but wanted to give the council a heads-up on where we were on some of these other items, which are bound to shift as you get into discussions. Any questions, concerns?
Uh, yeah.
Sure.
Chief, how much revenue are we losing for them not wanting us to do their rig checks anymore? And what are the potential, any, is there any kind of liability included, extra liability that they're taking on for us not doing that?
No, it actually kind of goes in line with, which probably should have been going on for years. This was kind of an agreement that when we started this, I don't know, 15, 16, 17 years ago, when we started, where their budget was a lot smaller, our budget was a lot smaller. We were relying, you know, almost 100% on volunteers and residents to handle our business. And at that point, they were funding half of our part-time personnel during the day. So, while they didn't have a lot of resources during the day, and we didn't either, the agreement was, is we would make sure that all of our rigs were ready to go for the next calls. And, you know, 15, 20 years ago, you only had, you know, 20 calls a month in the district. And now we're, they're getting closer to 900 or 1,000, and we're, you know, breaking 3,600 probably this year. Now, where they have some actual staffing in place Monday through Friday and a full-time chief, they really should be doing their own rig checks, so they know their own apparatus, and they know the parameters, and they know what they have or don't have. And for our folks to go up there and make sure they have water and fuel and air in their SCBA bottles for the next call, doesn't make a lot of sense when we're not the ones that are going to be driving those out at 3:00 in the morning. So, it kind of goes hand in hand, helps them provide the services and be familiar with their own equipment. And it allows our folks to not be in Lyman or Pumpkin Center or way up north on Highway Nine when the majority of our call volume and theirs happens down here in and around the Cedar Wully city limits. Because as you all know, we have the city limits, they're ours. But, you know, if you live on Cook Road or Collins Road or District Line or FNS Grade Road or Grip Road or Garden of Eden or Bassett, those are all District Eight areas that we provide 100% of the call first response for them, because they don't have fire stations in those areas. And we have for 30-plus years.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Cock.
So the fixed cost basically protects us from an unprecedented year, right?
Yeah, the fixed cost goes both ways. When we're suggesting a volume-based contract at this point. But yes, a fixed cost contract would, you have to pick kind of an average, right? Like, what are you going to base, what number of calls are you going to base your fixed cost on? So that's a negotiation in and of itself. And then, what we had in our last contract was that we agreed on, I think we looked at the last three prior years and figured out the average call volume. And then took the cost per call and multiplied that average call volume number by the cost per call, determined a starting point, and then inflated that by a percentage each year. And that's how we tracked along. They have been back and forth. They wanted, their commissioner, who was negotiating with us on the last contract, really wanted something fixed. And the commissioners at the time really wanted something fixed. During the last discussions that we've had with them in the past year on that contract, there was an expression of wanting a volume-based contract. We had pushed for a volume-based contract the last time. And, but you're right, it does protect you, insulate you in terms of going down if the number of calls went way down. We just haven't seen that happen much at all. I'd say if the calls go down, maybe it's 5% a year.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Councilman Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I emailed back and forth with Chief Wagner today about some of these numbers, because I wanted to verify my understanding of what we were, what our cost was for these calls and making sure that we were covering it. And it looks like it was $1,079 per call. And was it, you were expecting roughly 550 calls in the area that we cover constantly for them? Was, am I understanding that correctly?
That is roughly what they are trying to base our estimates for, for 2025. With them starting to handle some of those north and east calls during the day. So, right now, we're on average of about 700-plus calls a year. They're under the assumption that by handling those calls themselves, they're going to shave 150 calls off a year. And if they do so, it will fall in line. If we do the volume base where we're doing by call, the idea would be then if we went above that, we would go back and do a true-up. But we would have something in place as a starter to be able to do our biennial budget and kind of know where we're going to go as a starting point.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I definitely prefer the volume-based for payment on this, because it sounds like they might be underestimating how many times we're going to respond.
Well, and both sides have talked about the amount of time and energy it will take to go back and figure this stuff out. Because, you know, five, 10 years ago, we were doing this by the month, by the quarter, figuring out, you know, pulling up all the call volume from dispatch and deciding whose call was whose. And it was, you know, like 15 or 20 dollars a call on top of, it was an algorithm. We spent more time and energy trying to decide on the invoicing than it was worth it. So this would make a lot more sense and be a lot more user-friendly for both sides as far as the administration of and finance.
We've still got a ways to go on money. So the district came to us with a proposal where they backed out our salaries for our full-time firefighter EMTs from the hourly rate. And we obviously are pushing back on that. And that would have, at the 550 calls, their amount they would pay us would be about 309,000. So, anyway, we're pushing back on that, but that's the discussion we're having is around what goes into that direct cost rate. And we're going to vehemently stick to, it has to include the people who actually respond.
Yeah, definitely need to cover costs. Thank you.
Councilman Henderson.
So Charlie, what is our target date for wrapping this up? What do we have?
The goal here would be to meet with them at the end of October. And then it's a little hard to give it, we want to get it done by the end of the year, obviously. We'd like to get it done before the budget's done, because we're going to have to adjust the budget otherwise. Because it is general fund revenue we're talking about. So I would say, you know, December 31st, the very latest. But it's partly hard to predict, because we come back and talk with you, they go back and talk with the district commissioners, and that timing can get a little bit funky. It can take a little while between meetings sometimes. If they got good clear direction, and we do, and we appreciate the direction you've given us, it allows us to go a little quicker. So, my hope is we'll really pick it up after this, because I do think we're getting closer.
When is the expiration date of the contract?
It's the end of the year. So, yeah, we would have to work out something if we didn't have it done by then.
Thank you.
And we need the council's action on it, and the commission's action on it by then as well. So backing that up, December 1st is really pretty much when we need to have it done.
All right, any more questions or comments? Hearing none, anything else? All right, moving on then to council reports, and I'll start with Councilman Loy.
Thank you. I just wanted to go over something I already did before, because I got something to add to it. You know, I told you about the new park on top of Big Rock. So the Indian name for it is Uboast. So it'll be, the name will be Big Rock hyphen Uboast, or it'll be Uboss hyphen Big Rock. But if Woody had put up a couple pictures, I thought you might be interested in seeing the new park on top of Big Rock. So, he's coming, come on, Woody. There you go, there's a kitty cat. Then we got one other picture. Here we go, come on, Woody. There you go. This is on top of Big Rock, where we're going to do all of our hiking and stuff. But I thought you'd be interested in seeing those two pictures, because it's just interesting, so.
It is. Thank you very much for sharing that.
So come on down to Big Rock hyphen Uboast and have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Loy. Councilwoman Kesty.
Thank you. I just had one thing tonight. It's about the potential of a crosswalk or where we would be with, at the end of Cook Road. And there's the gas station there, Trail Road. Constituents, thank you, are concerned with kids and elderly being able to cross there safely. So I didn't know what to say back or where we were at with the roundabouts that we're going to be going there, cross-rock potential. I didn't know if there was an update that I could share with them or anything like that.
Yep, Bill is online. Bill, do you have any updates on that this evening?
No, I wasn't aware of the need for crosswalks on Cook Road. We're talking like mid-block crossing type things and stuff. I'm assuming like where Cook and Trail Road is, and somewhere in that vicinity, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Give me some time to go look at it. We'll put our team on it, and I may even connect with you later, so you can kind of tell me what your focus is on it. And let me see what the reason, Cook Road's kind of tough because of the type of arterial it is. But I just, I'm not aware of what the need is exactly, and I just need to be able to drill into it.
Thank you.
So I'll start, we'll get back to you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
Good evening. To touch on that comment, I can address it slightly. I spent a lot of time at Janicke Fields, and there's a lot of kids and families that will walk from the fields to the gas station now to get drinks and all of that stuff, instead of getting in their cars and driving. And so the crosswalk there on, across trail to get to the gas station would be beneficial. There's a lot of families and kids, when they're left unattended, they'll just dart straight through and run and try to beat the car. And it's not safe. The other thing that we see coming out and that I've had people talk to me about is when the school buses come out, and then you've got people turning off of Trail Road, trying to go either way, and coming out of the gas station at the same time. It becomes a little hectic. And there's a lot, a lot of breaks that are hit during that time. And so, that would definitely be an area to look at and would be worth checking out there for the safety of our community. And then, moving on to that, I had several people reach out to me from our community regarding my connection or contact with Puget Sound Energy in regards to the BEST project. And asked me specifically whether I had private meetings with them. I just wanted to state publicly that I have not had any private meeting with anybody from Puget Sound Energy. I was provided an email. I did respond to that email. And my response was that I, an invitation to come to council and speak and provide a presentation or be available to answer questions. And I did receive no response to that. So I just wanted to be open and transparent in the questions that I've received from the community and provide that for the record. On another note, I've also had requests for a possible CPR first aid class for the community, provided by the Fire Department, if that's possible to maybe put on the radar for 2025. If we've looked into that, if it's on the agenda, I'm not real sure. But I've been approached by several different people as to whether that would be an option.
We currently provide them on our website right now.
Oh, okay. So it's online and not in person?
Yeah, no, it's in person. They can get online and sign up for it. There's so many slots per, I think they do them every quarter at minimum, but we try to do them every other month.
Okay.
And I think the class size right now is 12 to 15, depending on instructors.
Okay.
It's subsidized by your county EMS levy. And our folks teach it and train it right here and now, so.
It's here, okay.
Really good, and it's really cheap compared to.
How often are they, or do you know?
I want to say, we do at least four a year, so every quarter.
Okay.
We have upped the game when we need it. And I think we've had them the last, every other month for the last six months, so.
Okay, and that's on the website to sign up, or how do they?
There's a link on the website under, the department's under Fire.
Under, okay.
And it goes through a deal. And Freya over at the EMS office does all the confirmation and sends us a list. And we provide the instructors, and they pay for them.
Perfect, thank you.
It's a great partnership.
Wonderful, I'll pass that along. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilman Henderson.
Thank you. I also was approached by several people and received several calls asking if I had had a private meeting with PSE. I have not. I responded to my email asking Robert Knoll to come in and talk to council as a whole. I thought that to be more appropriate. I did run into him at an event disclaimer. He came up and introduced himself to me. And I said, thanks, we look forward to seeing you come in. Other than that, I had a constituent with a public safety concern during some of the soccer games. There was somebody staying and sleeping inside the Winnie Hauser restroom. They've been advised to let law enforcement know if somebody's in there sleeping or doing anything illegal. This evening, we had a Public Works Committee meeting. We talked about a traffic and, traffic counting and reporting program in conjunction with surveying some certain areas to be made into either two-way or four-way stops. We also had a 1,590 affordable housing opportunity brought to our attention. And our committee will be looking to bring that to council after we do, after Mr. Bullock does some studies on that. And we went over a 2025 solid waste rate study. Our tipping fees have gone up, and it looks like we need to control costs where we can, because we're being charged a certain amount from the county that is a bill that we have to pay. So, within that, we are going to explore creative ways to save costs to the ratepayers for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Cock.
I forgot this. When is the School Resource Officer coming online, do we think? Because I've had several parents ask me that.
Well, the original plan was to have that come into effect 2025 school year. Right now, we're currently short on staffing, so we're trying to get up our staffing enough to fill that position. It was agreed upon that that would be a filled position after we were back to full staffing, instead of taking from our existing staffing.
That makes sense, thank you. And I, one other just comment that I'm originally from North Carolina, and my thoughts and prayers go out to my former home state. The mountains were devastated by Hurricane Helene. Entire towns were gone. Chimney Rock, which I've been to many times, is gone. And so my thoughts and prayers also to Florida and the path of Hurricane Milton, which they said is like a thousand-year storm, and it's going to cross the entire peninsula of Florida as a hurricane. And I bring these up besides they're happening to our country, but these tragic natural disasters highlight the importance of emergency and disaster preparedness. Because we're not immune. I mean, we have a large river near us. We have the threat of wildfires. We're in an earthquake zone. And Mount Baker's an active volcano. So, that's it for me, thank you.
All right, thank you. I have family in North Carolina too. We were concerned about them and just heard from them yesterday, so. Yeah, sent pictures. They're horrific. It was a bad one. Thank you. Councilman Burns.
My brother was supposed to be on the path to the storm, but luckily he flew up to New Jersey. So he's not going to be there for Milton that's happening right now. Wow. I did meet with someone from PSE about the energy storage facilities. And I expressed my concerns to him about the location and asked a lot of questions about how their process works, because I wanted to understand how they put out their requests and how much they direct what they actually want from them. I also encouraged them. I also encouraged them to come and actually speak to the entire council so that we could have that public transparency and people could hear the questions directly. I told them I thought that was very important for them to come do, to let people know what it is they were looking for. And that was my conversation with them. I've only had one request for that public acknowledgement. I also had a traffic concern. It had to do with the roundabout. I saw, showed up just after a child was hit by a car. Luckily, it looked like he was going to hobble away. But at the same time, people are not paying enough attention when they're pulling up the stop signs, going through roundabouts. So I would like to see us keep working on increasing our crosswalks. Delighted crosswalks, I think it'd be fantastic, especially in roundabouts as we start to add them in the city and other locations. And I'd also be curious what it costs to put them into existing locations for safety purposes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So I, I got an email about meeting with Robert Knoll and I did meet with him on a Friday. I knew it lasted for about an hour and my, my position was that just, why do we need to have all these stations? What is the big push? And so his feedback was that the Olympia passed a law by 2030 that gives us so much time to do this. And so they're just got five years to get all of this energy storage in place in order to make this happen. And my, my thought, and I told him like, well, I got a meeting. I've got to run over to Cedar Woolley right now. And he's like, oh, okay. And I said, I've got 10 minutes to get there. I'm going to drive as fast as I can. I can make it, but I'm going to put a lot of people in danger to get there. And he realized I was being metaphoric at that point, right? We can do things, but the rate that they're wanting to do it or whatever happened to pass this bill to make this happen puts a lot of people at risk and that's what I conveyed. The other part that I don't agree with personally that I conveyed to him is that as we push to become more and more and more green energy, we are actually enticing India, China, other third world countries to produce this. And if you look at the amount of cold fire power plants and other type of manufacturing facilities that are going up to keep with our demand, we are causing tremendous damage on a global scale. So in our efforts to be safe here in Washington or even in the US, we are, we are damaging the world if that's what we're looking at the metrics of, how much SHIO is being released. And so we're now putting out way more through that process and that's what I conveyed as well. I asked him to come before the council, tells him there's great interest, the community wants to hear from him and that it would be needed to be done. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I echoed that too. Sent it an email. In fact, I sent it twice. And he did respond and he said that they weren't quite ready to prepare, they weren't prepared. So I don't know what they're waiting for, but I said it was an open invitation and encouraged him to do so, to show. So last week, I was at a mayor's exchange conference on the 3rd and the 4th. It was really quite informative. There's really quite a demand and a need for replenishing employees. COVID actually left a lot of, the pandemic actually left a lot of cities, especially smaller cities, without a lot of staff, which is something that actually we're, we're experiencing ourselves. And law enforcement, the PD in many, many of the cities, that's a real issue. It was a good conference and I appreciated the opportunity to go. I also had the opportunity to visit State Street High School to be, to see their music studio. This is actually a means by which they are helping students kind of pull out of themselves and challenge themselves, challenge their lives. It's an excellent program. And I commend Dr. Mickelson and Tim McHugh, who is the instructor there for their work in this area. As you know, I sit on the 911 board. On Monday, I attended a Skagit Transit Celebration. We completed phase one of phase three. Mind you, it's only taken us 10 years to complete phase one, given the pandemic and inflation. And it was really, really something. It's been really something. Congressman Rick Larson was there. He was our guest speaker. He's been very instrumental in bringing funding to the Skagit Valley and for many projects. And the Skagit Transit Station is, you know, also one of those. He also did that for our own Olmsted Park. So I had an opportunity to thank him once again on behalf of both the city council and our city for his support in our projects that we have going on here. Okay, with that, we are going to move into public comment. It is 6:35. I will open public comment. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes and state your name. And if you can just maybe share how you're affiliated with the city. So I don't know. Do you want to sign up at all? Okay, we do have a sign. Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, perfect. Okay. So I have Zavi. Zavi, you want to come up?
Hello, Madam Mayor. Can you, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay. I hope this doesn't go over, but this is very important for the community to hear. My name is Zavira Thorn and I am a delegate and board member of Skagit Queer as its Veterans and Senior Outreach Coordinator. We are a nonprofit organization for Skagit County's LGBTQIA+ community and are dedicated to education, outreach and advocacy and for bridging community connections. We have prepared a letter of appreciation for the City of Cedar Woolley and I would like to share that with you now publicly. Madam Mayor and honorable members of the City of Cedar Woolley, of the Cedar Woolley City Council, we, the Board of Directors of Skagit Queer, would like to express our heartfelt gratitude for your support and recognition of the LGBTQIA+ community by hosting Cedar Woolley's first Pride event that was held on August 25th, 2024. As members of Skagit Valley's queer community, we were deeply moved by the city's efforts to create a safe and celebratory place for us. The event was a resounding success fostering connection, acceptance and joy among the attendees. Your commitment to inclusivity and diversity sends a very powerful message that Cedar Woolley values and welcomes all individuals regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. Thank you for providing a platform for local LGBTQIA+ voices and our stories, for helping us bring community, members and organizations and businesses in solidarity and for demonstrating Cedar Woolley's dedication to equality and human rights. Cedar Woolley's example has created a ripple effect that I personally have witnessed, inspiring further acceptance and understanding throughout the Skagit Valley. And it makes us proud to call Cedar Woolley our home. Please extend also our heartfelt gratitude to Cedar Woolley's supporting agencies involved in keeping this remarkable event safe and welcoming. And we eagerly anticipate future initiatives promoting unity and inclusivity. Sincerely, Skagit Queer Board of Directors. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is there anybody online? Please raise your hand and Woody will unmute you so you can speak. Seeing none, I will close public comment at 6:39. And we will jump right into our public hearing for the 2025-2026 biennium budget. This is our second public hearing. As we did with the first one, we will have Finance Director Kelly Conken. She'll present. Then when she is through presenting, we will open it up to the public. Currently, there is no one who has signed up for the public hearing comment, but I will certainly open that up for anybody who would like to do that. After that, then I will turn it over to the council so that they can make any comments and, and have any questions. So that's the order that we will take. So this actually is over to you, Kelly.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. So the city is required to hold three public hearings for the budget. The first public hearing was held on September 25th, so this is our second one. Before I go into the presentation further, just wanted to outline the documents that were included in the packet. So the first one is the presentation, just a summary of what we're going to talk about today. The second item was the budget summary. So the council, in the end, will actually approve the budget on a fund basis. So for each city fund, so that budget summary includes the, the funds, that summary. We've also included the preliminary budget document, which is the really long 106-page document with all the, all the line items and all the detail. In that, we have highlighted items in green that have changed since the presentation of the budget on September 25th. As we talked about at that meeting, management still had quite a bit of work to do on the budget and those are the items we made adjustments to. Also included in there is the preliminary department budget. So same information as the greater detailed one or same totals just by department or by area instead of with the full, full detail, just for your different views, for how different people like to view the budget. And then on this one, we've also included our FTE or our full-time equivalent account as well. So Woody will move into the budget, or the presentation. And you can go to the next slide. So just a quick overview of what we're going to talk about today. Again, this is our second public hearing. Just answer some questions from the prior meeting. Go over some notable items. And then next steps after this meeting, in new business tonight, we're also going to talk about the, the property tax ordinance that we're required to do every year. And then in the October 23rd meeting, we're going to have our third public hearing. We're going to do the first read of the budget ordinance and a second read of the property tax ordinance and hold a public hearing for the property tax ordinance as well. So we still have a couple more meetings to discuss budget and property tax items. If you go to the next slide. One of the questions from the last meeting was regarding the general fund expenditures over the years. So at the last discussion, we presented this information 2018 through the 2026 proposed budget. Wanted just to give a little bit of context on that. If you'll go to the next slide. So I won't go over all of this information. This is really just to provide some information. And if anyone had questions, I'm happy to answer in more detail. With the caveat that there's a lot of information and a lot of activity in the general fund. So this is, you know, not a perfect representation, but just a snapshot of the big things that increase the city's budget over time. So what we've included here is the totals at the top that you saw from that first chart and then the change over time. But we also adjusted out any additional services or one-time expenses to show the increase over time without those items. So just a couple of, I'll go over just a couple of them briefly. The first one is in 2019 when our eight firefighter paramedics switched over and were then paid from Cedar Woolley's, Cedar Woolley's general fund. That also included equipment. So when that changeover happened, it included, included the equipment as well. So an increase in services that Cedar Woolley, the city, provided. In 2020, we had our police levy lid lift. That's included in there. 2021, there's a big spike in expenditures that year. That's from our ARPA money that the city got in. We initially had that money in the general fund, but we transferred it out to its own separate fund to ensure we could track that and had transparency on that. So that shows as an expenditure that year, although we didn't actually spend that much of that money. We just moved it into another account. And then the last item I wanted to highlight is in 2024 with the fire EMS levy lid lift. So I know there's a lot of numbers and data up there, but if anyone has questions on it later, please let me know. If you go to the next slide, Woody. I briefly wanted to discuss some of the city's special purpose and reserve funds. So Fund 118, the National Opioid Settlement Fund and Fund 189, this is our ARPA fund, our federal ARPA money. So for these funds, we received or we will receive a finite amount of money in those funds. So it's not going to have ongoing revenue year after year. So we have a finite, a finite amount of money that went into those funds and now we're slowly spending them down. So when you see in the budget a deficit in those two funds, that's not concerning because that, that's the plan, to spend that money down. And you can see here, I've included the 2024 estimated ending cash to show that we do have cash in those funds to cover those deficits. There are other funds, the 301 through 314. These, the, we do have ongoing revenues for these funds, but we have to spend them on a specific purpose. So sometimes we spend more in one year and less in another year. But again, we have the cash balance in those funds to sustain that from year to year. So just wanted to pride a little bit of context when you see those, those negative numbers in the budget that those are strategically planned that way. If you go to the next slide. So before we talk about the FTE and staff count, I just wanted to touch briefly on public records requests. So most of our public records requests go through GovQA. We're trying to now funnel all of them through GovQA, which is just the, the system we use to track, to track all of that. There's probably been a handful of requests that haven't been inputted in to here. So the number may not be precise. But from December 2017 to current, we've had 5,114 requests, public records requests. And those can vary wildly in how much time it takes to process those, the amount of documents and files that that includes. And that amount is going up and Chief McRae, I think, will talk about the police department specifically a little bit later. But the year to date for 2024 is 663 requests have come in. So it's definitely trending up. Right now, our open requests are at 59. So there is some significant activity that related to public records requests.
Kelly, can I ask a question? In my last employment, I dealt a lot with public records. Just, I read a lot of them. And one way to mitigate potential litigation is to quickly, I mean, to respond within the first five days or whatever and say, we got your request. We're working on it. Do we have a tracking system to make sure we're not missing any?
All, all public records go into GovQA, which does send out reports. And we do send out five-day letters, so we don't necessarily fulfill requests within five days. But yeah, within five days, we send what we call a five-day letter, either providing the document, you know, if it's quick or, or putting in timelines to say, we anticipate your records will be. your records will be provided by X day, or it's going to be an installment, those types of things.
Thank you.
If you go to the next slide, Woody. So the FTE count for the 2025-2026 budget includes some changes to positions. So you'll see on the left there is new positions, and this is why I wanted to talk about, just give you a quick glance at pub, public records requests. We're asking for a couple of positions. The first one is a part-time public records officer, the, for the entire city. The second is a part-time police records clerk. They, the police department does get the, the majority of public records. The next position is a part-time court clerk. We currently have a contracted, a part-time individual to assist with the court. And I, I believe the request from the court primarily stems from workload, needing additional assistance, as well as succession planning as well in our, in our courts. Some current positions we'd like to make some changes to. The first one is to maintain our assistant planner. We currently have an assistant planner that is temporary, temporary. We'd like to make that a permanent position. Next one is the mayor's position from part-time to full-time. And then the final one is the HR analyst from part-time to three-quarter time. And this is an increase of 2.25 FTE. Chief, do you want to talk about your position at all?
Yes, if you'd like to. I did include that in basically a late material. I don't know if you guys had a chance to review it, but basically on our end, we do deal with a lot of records requests. Right now, it's really overwhelming our department in the records area. We have one, one records clerk that is, all she does, she does 100% of her job, is pretty much records requests. And then we have another one that's doing 25% of that work, reviewing the videos, marking where, marking and taking notes of times where it needs to be redacted before release. A lot of this has to do with videos that need to be redacted. They take a lot of time, they take a lot of time to review over and over again before they get sent out for release. Overall, this becomes an liability issue at some point. If we don't fulfill these requests, then we could be liable for those requests. Although we do have good communication with our records clerk, Lisa, who does a lot of the records requests and release, she communicates with those partners that are requesting and gives them timeframes for the complex requests that come in. So currently, we have four records clerk positions, and 1.25% of the time are being used just towards records requests. They, they handle police and fire records requests, so they handle both of those. They continue to increase. So if you, at the table we got there, it's, you know, 2019, we had 607. 2023, we're 871 records requests. Right now, we're on pace for over 900 records requests for the police department this year. So I, I don't expect that to change. I expect that to increase, and it will continue to increase. Of those requests, from 2023, 531 of those 871 were video requests. So those take a lot of time and effort to release and redact before release. So. Any questions on that, you know?
Well, I had asked it maybe that we just wait until public comment. There's kind of a format that we follow with public hearings, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So if you do have questions, please hold it, write it down, or so that you can share that. All right, thank you.
If you go to the next slide, Woody. Just wanted to go over some other items in here as well. We got word from AWC, who we get our insurance through, that medical insurance is increasing 7.3%, which is a big, I mean, salaries, salaries and benefits are a big part of the city's expenditures, so that impacts our budget. Our property insurance is estimated to increase at least 10% in 2025. I did want to note, if you're looking through the budget in the general fund, we did, the city does collect the GMA impact fees for the school district, and then we remit that to the, to the school district. So we used to hold that in the general fund, but that should actually be in a custodial fund. Those aren't our funds, and it's, we're just a pass-through. So we're no longer reporting that in our general fund. There was also a new accounting requirement that came out regarding leases and subscription for IT items. So you may see some adjustments, or you will see some adjustments in line items, just moving certain items from where they were originally, where they've been categorized in previous years, to that new line item. We spent a lot of time working on the general fund and some of our special revenue funds. Management is still looking at the utility funds, so our enterprise funds, if you see that in the budget, we're still, we're still working on those, and we'll be presenting some revised numbers in the next two council meetings that we discuss the budget on. And then again, wanted to point out that the changes from the September 25th meeting are highlighted in green on that detailed document. And that's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I am going to open it up to the public for comment. If there is anyone in the chamber here who would like to make comment regarding the 2025-2026, kind of follow the same line as what we do with public comment, or the public hearing comment, follow the same line as public comment, try to keep it to three minutes, give your name, and how you may be affiliated with Siege Woolley. Is there anybody in the chamber that would like to make comment?
Yeah, Phil Murray. The mayor's position was, you're talking about mayor's position becoming full-time instead of part-time. That is what she, she put in for, was part-time. So the next time you vote on it for candidates, that's when it should take effect, not now. The public records requests, I put in a few of myself. And is, at this point, as far as I am aware, because they've told me this, mine have to go through the city attorney, which does not make sense at all that I have to suffer that. I asked for a police, police report about a trespass on railroad property. Who trespassed me, where the signs were, whose land is it? I had 600 pages of redacted material from that. This is ridiculous, what people have to go through to find out the truth about stuff. And I hope you do get somebody who is honest and will work hard diligently to get the truth out there for the questions people ask. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make comment? Okay, how about online? Is there anybody online who would like to make comment? I can't see them, Woody, but maybe you can let me know if there's anybody there with hand up.
I don't see anybody raising their hand.
All right, thank you, Woody. So with that, we will take this to the, the city council. So questions, go ahead, Councilman Baca.
Thank you very much. I had a couple of questions that I wrote down. One was about, when we were talking about the increased clerk position for the courts. I thought we just, it was probably a couple of years ago, but actually outsourced a bit of that to back, to take care of the backlog. Did we, did we get a good handle on the backlog of cases that we had had? Nikki was helping us find somebody because it was just a huge backlog.
Yeah, it's my understanding that we're mostly caught up on that. I can't speak too much for the judge, but I understand our backlog is in a much better spot than it was.
Cool. That's awesome. And then, for the records, I thought that we just had a meeting about adding somebody to that, which we did, from what I understand. And then, were we going to pursue a way to automate that with some AI? I think that was on the docket, or we were pursuing some software that was going to help with that, and I thought we budgeted for that. Was that a no?
I haven't, I haven't heard of that soft, AI software for public records requests.
We had talked about it, you were out, chief, so, but the lieutenant was here, I believe. And so we did talk about, like, records requests, we had a pretty good meeting about it. And part of it was, how do we streamline this? Because it is a pretty big deal. I'm wondering if maybe it would be a good idea to do like a Six Sigma project to understand the variances in there, and if we can automate or find out where, where maybe it's taking a long time that we might be able to see some improvement there. Not, not on skill set, oh, I'm not doing it fast enough, but a way to just see, well, is there a way we can, you know, label the records a little bit different and then send out a, for report or whatnot?
So I, I don't know if it's getting confused, but we did have Axon, and we have auto labeling to help label those records with the correct case numbers while officers go out to scenes. As far as redacting, we did try a system, and it's, it doesn't, it, it still takes just as long to do that, so we, we figured out, we don't, it's not saving us any time to do so. As far as AI, I, I don't know that.
Do we have a report from other cities to say, what is the average mean time of accessing a report? I know there are different types, but maybe they go into a one, two, and three category, and then we can understand, depending on size or request, just a little bit better understanding what that average mean time is, and then what they might be doing. It, I mean, you probably don't have that information right now, but it might be something to, to investigate, is, at least a preliminary success project for, for, that, that is a pretty big ask, and it is improving pretty quickly. I had one other question for, for the general fund, and that was, are, are we gonna, it would be nice to break that into subcategories. It kind of is, but when we talk general fund, we talk just the general fund. It's, most of the other stuff is broken into categories, so we got public works, and then we can kind of refine from there. You can do that with the general fund, but it seems vague just in talking it, the name itself, general, right? So is there a way to, like, break that apart and say, this is for this section, this is for this section, that's, which we already do, but more so on the chart, so it's not as confusing when the public's listening to it, or when we're explaining it, that way we could say, instead of just the general fund, here's Parks and Rec, here's this, here's that.
We do break up the general fund, the expenditures by department. The, in, and that's what that chart showed, is kind of by department or function, or that table, I should say. The challenging part, and the reason why all these things are included in the general fund, is because the vast majority of the revenues are unrestricted revenues. So we have one pool of revenues, for, the biggest pool of revenues that pays for all of those services. So like we talked about in September, property tax, sales tax, and utility tax really can pay for any city function, and because most things in the general fund don't have their own revenue source, they're all pulling from those, that revenue base. So we, we do the best we can to present it by department, but we do approve it as an entire fund when we're doing budgeting.
That makes sense. And I do look forward to our meeting on, on tomorrow, so I'll get more information then. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilman Cox?
Yes, I'm just curious, and I also look forward to our meeting next week. The, in terms of the, you know, I keep thinking about the whole concept of, you know, knowing what our reserve fund is, and it's a little difficult for me when I see it by the funds, and I know those funds are kind of designated, but you also can borrow from other funds, so I don't have a general sense, if we really get in trouble, how much money we have to tap. I don't know if that's possible or not.
Yeah, I'm happy to send out a report that includes cash. Generally, for these budget documents, I don't include the estimated cash in the fund because in our budget software, it gets included, it adds it with revenue, so I don't want to confuse cash and revenue. I, I get confused if it's put on the same, same report, but we can show what the cash balance is. And specifically for the general fund, we don't have a separate reserve fund there, but we do hold a balance, a balance in that fund that is above, above our reserve levels that we, that we require as a city.
I imagine you, at the very least, you'd, you know, emergent, immediate reserve fund, you'd want to be able to pay your employees for X number of weeks, right?
Right. Yeah, we, we have enough, I believe, to cover, and I think this is our minimum, of 12 weeks. I'd have to go back and review the financial policy, but we definitely have enough in our reserve to sustain in the short term.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Henderson?
So we went into detail about the new positions, the three part-times. Can we go into more detail about the current positions we're trying to do more with? We got maintain an assistant planner. And it was my understanding that we hired somebody half-time, and we had a grant to bring them up to full-time, and now that grant has expired.
I'll let Tom talk about that.
All right, yes. The grant hasn't expired, it's, it's through next year, but we are able to draw down from that grant to help with his salary. But the workload is such, not just with the comp plan, but everything else that we're doing in the department, that he's staying extremely busy. When I came on board, Nicole had her to-do list on the, on her whiteboard there in the office, and she was just not able to keep up. I was able to help with some of the big picture stuff, but when Ashton came on, then she had somebody who could take on some of the, the smaller permitting review type projects that otherwise she was not able to get to. So he's been really truly a godsend. Our, our workload is that of a city that's 13,000 people. I think we were noting the other day that, it was like 20 years ago, we had 8,000 people. So we really are busy and trying to keep up with that. So we'd like to keep him on. He's also a backup for our permit tech. He knows that system, so if the permit tech ever takes a few days off, we have a new one. But if she were to take time off, then he could fill in seamlessly, so.
Is this, is this different from the temporary person we approved to have, to come in and deal with the backlog of permits?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know about that part, but that's.
Yeah, this position is one that we brought on for the comp plan, to help us with the comprehensive plan, as full-time assistant planner.
Okay.
So it is grant-funded currently.
But the other position, what, was it Barry that came in temporarily?
Oh, for building inspection, yeah, we did have Barry, and now we have Al, and they're helping us with building inspection until we get somebody permit on board, and, which we're hoping to do in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, a couple of different things. The codes changed, Barry came in to help us very short-term, that's the one that came to council. And then Bobby left to take a position in the fire department, and so we've brought in Al, another retired building official, to help us just keep things going until we hire permanent.
Okay. And then, next, we got mayor from part-time to full-time. Do we want to cover that?
Actually, I could probably cover that.
Okay.
So actually, when I came on, it was then Mayor Waggoner, who said, you know, when you come on, you realize that this will not be part-time, it will be sometimes full-time. But this job has grown, as has, the city has grown, as has our offices have grown, to a position where I am basically working, I am working full-time, and oftentimes more than that. I sit on five or six different, on a regular basis, five or six committees that are shared on a regular basis, five or six committees that are shared with the other mayors and the commissioners. And they, it's a lot of policy that's being made, and you do want somebody there to sit on there, so that the policies are being looked at through the lens of Seidra Woolley, making sure that we're taking care of Seidra Woolley. And it also has to do with a lot of funding. So, you know, I've never had the opportunity to really add how much, how many millions I've had to help bring into Seidra Woolley, but it's been pretty exciting having those opportunities to do that. And that has come with the different committees that I sit on. I also partake, as you know, in a lot of different functions within the city. But more than that, actually working within the office here, doing email. Email has grown to a place where many times I come in at 6:30, 7 o'clock, just to get through, you know, two to three hours of the bulk of the email. So I can go through the day and make the meetings that I'm a part of, and, and the work within the city here that we're doing. I, you know, it's been, it's, I'm, I'm not complaining. I mean, it's been a good job, but it really is full time work anymore. And when somebody asked me about this, I said, you know, when I complete my position here in three years, we want somebody who's going to be able to come in, who's got those skills and abilities to read the budgets, to have good understanding of what's happening within the community. So knowing what the different agencies are doing, being able to do that. You want somebody who's going to be willing to work full time in order to do the job that needs to be done here. It, it is a full time job, and it's kind of crazy that it was never brought up full time. But I guess, the way that I look at it is that when the part time position came on as mayor, actually, the city was a lot smaller. And oftentimes, people were, they had their own business, or they worked somewhere. So they did work within their business, or they did work within another business, and then they worked as a part time mayor, because that's what it was. But, you know, the city has really grown to a place where it's 13, over 13,000 people. And between working with legislatures, between working with the different regulations that we now do as a city, between working with the different committees, it, it is, it is a job. And I do it to the best of my ability. And I want to continue to do that to the best of my ability.
Okay. And then we got HR analyst, part time to three quarter time.
Yes.
Just got done talking about this.
We did. We did. So it's a fresh topic, I'm sure. So I don't need to go back into sort of the needs. We talked about 1.5 FTEs is our estimated need for HR at the time. We're not going straight back to that, but we still do have a significant need. We filled a half time position, the, to address the biggest need, the most glaring risk issue that we had, which was not having the HR person doing the work, be in an unrepresented position. So that's been very helpful and effective, and they've been able to range into different things. We, we hired Kim Many. She's a HR professional. She had background with ESD and with the private sector. She's been a great addition to the city. She's working on a variety of things, legal best practices, recruitment. We have a ton of recruitments, the chief mentioned, recruitments in the PD. We have, she also serves as the civil service commissioner. So she's very busy with both police, well, police, and then with fire onboarding most recently as well. And as fire is opening, she'll definitely be handling all of that stuff. Civil service just updated all of their rules. So she was involved in some of that effort as well. She's interacting with the unions, which is great. It's really helping. She's doing a lot more work with us on interview prep, trying to help us get better organized as we go into interviews, organization wise. As I mentioned, we're doing a lot of recruiting. She's doing some stuff as well with advertising positions in different ways than we've done in the past, which has helped. Onboarding and offboarding, we're really working on over, overhauling those systems. But all these things I'm mentioning, and there's more, they all need more time. And the reality is, she's putting out fires, and she's kind of running from thing to thing. And she can see where we need to go as an organization from an HR perspective, but the time isn't there to do all these things. So she's having to just swivel between various things. And we knew that when we brought her on, that it's going to be a tough, tough role to play. We got a big records request recently related to HR, so that's taken a tremendous amount of her time. We have record keeping work to do, to update all of our, our personnel records that we just haven't addressed to date, that we need to get into. So she's identifying those things and starting to organize those projects, and employer retention efforts, whether it's required trainings, whether it's wellness and safety efforts, and things that make the culture better. There's a whole long list of those things as well. So there's just a lot of work there. We're a large, larger organization. We're a growing organization. And, and we knew when we asked for half time, that it wasn't going to fill, you know, the full need, but it was a start. And we appreciate the council's support on that. And we're trying to modestly live within the city's means as we move forward here, by bumping that position from half to three quarter in the budget, which wouldn't take effect until January. But the extra hours would be very helpful.
Okay. And then there's another position that's not listed on here that I found in the prelim budget, about adding another fire marshal, a second fire marshal?
Yeah, I think we talked about that at, at our meeting, that we initially had that in the budget notes, but it actually should be removed from the budget notes. We didn't include that position in this budget.
That's right, we did. I appreciate you reminding me of that, because I went home and I was reading through it, and I saw that again, and.
And I do just want to thank you, Councilman Henderson, for coming in and having that budget discussion. It's, it's really great to sit down and discuss it.
It was. We talked about a lot of things. I, I have a lot more questions. I can keep going. I don't know if anybody else wanted to cast some questions.
Quick question. Who handles the, for the city, the benefits, retirement, medical stuff? Because that can get kind of dicey and time consuming.
So yeah, the HR analyst is handling those things right now, in partnership with payroll. So it's a little bit of both, but a lot of the, the like open enrollment, and, you know, helping people with those transitions is all handled by HR.
And we, she is putting on a benefits fair for our employees next month, I think, which is really great for our, for our employees to make sure they're getting all of the benefits that they're, they're owed. She's also very dedicated to providing more benefits, especially ones that are very, very low cost to the city. So things that we haven't had ti- time to research for our employees, she, you know, already kind of thought of those things on day one. So that's been a real benefit for the city.
Thank you.
If I may, just if we're on this topic, for the FTE positions, moving the mayor to full time from part time, would that take place during this term, or would that take place for the next term? I know for council, because they vote on it, it would go into the next term. But is that something that is being proposed to push through this, this budget cycle for 2025?
It's currently proposed for 2025, the way it's written on.
I, you know, my feeling is a full time mayor does make sense, because you're going to open up the pool for, for like you said, more talent, things like that. Right now, it's difficult to get talent if it's not full time. I think though, that, and I'm not sure, my memory might be off, but didn't we do part time with a full time city manager or a full time mayor? Isn't that how that worked out? So there was the two options, or no?
That was well before my time. I'm not really.
In the municipal code, or, you know, I think when, when I came on, even you were explaining that, that a mayor's part time if they have a full time city manager, or they're full time.
Yeah, but the problem is, is that, I mean, Charlie can tell you, he's already overworked. He's overworked as it is. And he's also helping out with the HR person. So kind of doing stuff that kind of is in his job description, but not in his job description. And quite honestly, with the mayor's job, it's just, it's, it's overwhelming sometimes. It really is, the amount of work that it requires, and the hours that it requires.
Is it a municipal code change then? I mean, is it written into our, in our code?
That's a really, that, I, so that I don't know. That's a good question.
For some reason, I'm thinking it is. It's something we want to check out if we did do something like that. But there's a lot of things that you do that are very admirable. You're on a lot, you're on AWC, you're on SCOG, you're on 911. The list goes on and on. North Star, all these things. And I, I do admire those, and I, please take no offense to this, but I, I focus on the city. So a lot of that stuff's reaching outward, and it's admirable that it's done. And I think, like you said, it does benefit the city from time to time. But it does take a lot of time, and it's not necessarily benefiting the city, even though it benefits a community of all, right? That's a good way to put it. But.
It is a good way to put it. But it does, in a big way, benefit the city. And you do want somebody there representing the city. The most recent, I think, that we just, with the SCOG transportation board that I sit on, so every year, I've been talking about Cook Road, because Cook Road is a nightmare, as you know. I mean, when people leave in the morning, it looks like an exodus. And then when you have the train, it gets backed up for miles. It really does. So I've been pushing for that. And Wazdot does sit on that committee, along with us, with the mayors and the council. They've heard everything that I've said, and they've actually put together a plan where they're going to improve it somewhat. It's not going to be perfect, but it's going to be able to pull people off the freeway. And, you know, that does impact our people who work here in the city, but also people who work east of us, and people who work at, at Janiki Industries. So, and a lot of those people live here in Seidra Woolley. So it is, it's, those committees, I, I could sit on other committees, but I, as you said, they just, they're nice, but they don't really benefit Seidra Woolley. I don't sit on those. I don't take my time to do that. I don't see where they're beneficial. I'll attend them once in a while to see what's going on. But I don't, I don't participate in them, because it's just, my time is focused on Seidra Woolley and its benefits. My time is focused on the citizens. Everything I do, you can, I can tell you even in, in our director's meeting, one of the last things I'll ask is, is this beneficial for the citizens? And if it is, then we're going to do it, no matter what it takes. If it's not, then why should we do it?
So I'm just thinking, like, if, if somebody was to step into a mayor position, and they're looking at job description, being on all those committees would be a requirement for that job description?
Absolutely.
And so they would need to do that in order to be mayor. It seems like we would be able to petition the SCOG without necessarily being on the board. Or we'd be able to petition and have a voice heard. And if we, if we don't, I would almost consider that like discrimination, like, hey, you're not hearing our voice.
There's a lot of funding, there's a lot of funding that comes through SCOG, and that's, that funding comes back to Seidra Woolley, as you heard Mark espouse time and time and time again. Because he, he sat on the subcommittee of that. But, you know, again, millions there, millions that have come back, that have been street projects, sidewalk projects, stormwater projects. That's all funding that you need, you need a mayor sitting on that board, supporting that, and, and encouraging that to come back to Seidra Woolley. Otherwise, if you're not there to get a slice of the pie, you don't get a slice of the pie.
Yeah, I can, I can see being on some, and SCOG is, is gadget. You know, in North Star, there was a focus that it would impact Seidra. I think, and I, I do want to thank the executive branch and the councils for last week's workshop. That was really kind of cool to get those, get the people that are here in Seidra Woolley on the plate. You know, I don't, AWC is all Washington cities, so that kind of comes together. There's a lot of them that are out there, and I would think that, you know, it's, it's just a tough one for me to wrap my head around. I know, Charlie, you were looking to get HR, because your plate was full. And so you, you kind of wanted to spend a little bit more time in mentorship and training, the employees, and kind of doing that. So there's, there's roles that we have, and I would love to have more people to support me in my role at work. I feel like, man, I can do so much more if I had a person working for me, or maybe two people that I can delegate to, and then they had somebody that they can even delegate to. And we would take it out of the water and do a bunch. But it's all about budget and resources, and if we have access to it. I see our, it, it's a funny one, because our budget is so much. And I think that we have, it looked like 1.7 million left over in the budget that's not actually allocated for, which is nice to see something like that in there. Now, it might be, or it might get to be, but it's a very tight margin. And so if the budget doesn't go our way, then that margin shrinks down. If we get more, then great. But they are tight margins. And I just wish we had a bigger float in that, to where we can actually have a lot more room. I would like to see, you know, I don't even think 10% is good. Dave Randi says, three to six month emergency fund. That's emergency. That's not your retirement. We're not saving for retirement. We're so dependent on these grants, that we can't even make our own decision without the Department of Commerce, you know, taking away everything from us, you know, making up these law. We, we just have no independence with our community. So I'd love to see us kind of set this huge mega council site. But I, I do thank you for explaining that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a couple of quick questions. The city of Burlington, there, what is their, do we know what their population is?
I can look it up briefly. I want to say it's eight or 9,000, somewhere around there.
Okay.
I can look it up real quick.
They have eight or 9,000, and they have a city administrator and a part time mayor, I believe. And if I'm, if I remember correctly. And then the city of Anacortes, they have a full time mayor, but no city administrator. Is that correct? Am I correct?
Yes.
In understanding? Okay. I'm just trying to understand the surroundings.
Yeah, we, we can break it down a little bit. The mayor works with all the mayors. I believe Burlington may have a full time mayor. That's kind of my recollection. But we could, no, they do. Okay, we can, we could pull all the data for you. I know, like in Mount Vernon.
Yeah, there's somebody who serves as a chief of staff over there. Right.
So it's a lot like a city administrator. So there, sometimes it's semantics. And just to answer the prior question, we did check the code, and Nicky checked the code as well. And there's, there's nothing that would need to be changed to do this.
Because I, I just, from listening to the constituents, I've had several people contact me in, since this came out on Friday, that had looked at it. And the concern was that, as an elected position, understanding that the mayor does do a lot, however, as an elected position, it is a part time position. And that's what the elected position was for by the constituents. And so several people's kind of discussion and solution in that is that, okay, well, if that is in fact the case, and there is this kind of workload, then this term is served, and the next term, this, this change is made before the next term, so that the voters are voting on a full time position, and not a part time position. And that was the feedback that I received from people contacting me after looking through this.
Senator, I, I could see that, for some reason. But yeah, I could see how that would be a better bit.
And then I just had one more question in regards. So the, the part time HR was brought on, and that was to take some workload off of your plate, Charlie, because of everything that was, that was going on. And so in theory, that has taken, that was estimated to be about 30% off of your plate. Is that, has that come off of your plate? Has that worked out?
Part time HR was a shift from our payroll slash HR assistant in finance. So she no longer does HR. She does all payroll.
Okay.
So we just took that half of her position that was dedicated to HR, and moved it out into a nonrepresented position that's not in a union.
Okay. So you've still been having to handle that?
I'm doing exactly, a lot of the same stuff. But her range is broader, because she's in an unrepresented position. So she can do more with the unions, for example.
And she actually protects the city. She actually protects the city, because there's some things that it would be.
There are conflicts of interest.
There are. There certainly are. And so she's able to take that on and protect the city. So, and we are really, we're a city who should have 1.5 in HR, because of our size. And again, I, you know, we don't talk about it a whole lot, but the needs that are happening here within the city. So exam, example, the example is the public records, of course, the way that that has greatly increased. But there are things like that that are happening, that because of the size of the city that is growing, the way that it's growing, you know, you just, you know, you, you need, you need to bring on an HR person. I would encourage, if, if nothing else, to bring her on, bring on the HR person, because that is really protecting the citizens and protecting the city.
I got a little bit more, since we're having a discussion about the budget, which is very important. There was a, there was a, and I've just been going through and looking at what's new and what we haven't done. For instance, Fund 106, the cemetery endowment fund, there's 52,000 slated to come out for a niche project, or niche, however you pronounce that.
Yes.
Niche. And I was looking for a remaining balance in that endowment fund. How much would we have left over if we did that?
I believe, let me look at that. I believe it is the majority of that fund. I don't know that I have the cash balance of that fund at hand, but I believe that uses a significant portion of the reserve in that fund.
Okay. And then there was another line item. There's so many pages. It's a lot of pages. For, bear with me, just one second. For, bear with me just one second. How was that one? Well, anyways, I remember what it was. It was for the, it was for funding a arts commission for 10,000. Where does that money come from? Is that general fund money?
That's currently in the general fund.
Okay. And what, why haven't we explored putting that to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to fund out of lodging tax dollars instead?
And that could be explored. I, it, it's a little bit tricky because generally the phrase that you apply to lodging tax money is putting heads on beds. So you're going to see a lot of events funded that way and things that literally bring people to town. And the Arts Commission work could do some of that, but also could be much more locally focused.
Because we're funding, we're putting a bunch of money into one of the parks from that fund. So for '25, well, '25 and '26, nothing shows up for that, just total revenues. But 20, obviously, because they haven't decided where to spend the money yet. And what is our projection for the new hotel finishing and the additional amount that we might receive? Are we looking at getting about double for lodging tax funds?
It's really hard to project, really in any year.
Sure.
It's, it's hard to project. Last year, we had more activity than we've had recently in the, for lodging tax. And I'm not, I'm not really sure why. So it's hard to project. So we, we definitely do a lower dollar amount in that fund to ensure that when we, our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee gives out those grants, that we don't over expend in that fund. But then we would have additional capacity in the next year to, to give grants with some of the reserve. We generally don't hold, we don't, we don't generally hold a lot of money in that fund like we do some of the other funds. We don't like build it up and then spend it on one, like, big projects. We generally use the money that we receive each year and the next year to cover those expenses.
Okay. But in the nature of saving money, because saving it out of one account or saving it across all the accounts, it's same to me, right? Same to the taxpayers.
Well, you can't, the lodging tax has to, state law requires us to only spend it on very specific activities. And, you know, Charlie used the heads and beds. But it is for tourism promotion, so that's why we keep it in a separate fund to track and transparency and make sure we're following all of those requirements. So we can't use those funds for any other...
Right.
Any activity that falls outside of that.
You could use it to buy sports equipment for the soccer league, which we've done before in Burlington. You can, you can spend it on all kinds of stuff.
I mean, there, there can be some interpretation of that.
Right.
Whether that would be okay to do.
So the question I'm asking is, why, why are we funding out of the general fund something that we could fund out of lodging tax money? It, it's, I mean, eventually, we are going to vote on, on a budget. So at what point, at what point in this process do we start saying, I don't want this, and I don't want that? And we start making cuts where we see that we need to make them? And then we're all going to be voting on something that we'd like to see passed?
The only thing I have to add, and I know Charlie can talk about the other part of this more, is that the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, they put forth, so we meet, people apply, we meet with the committee, they determine who's going to receive an award and for how much within the dollar, the total dollar limit. So the council doesn't necessarily have direct control over that. The council can, once the committee has made its recommendations, the council could award an organization less money than the committee recommended. But they can't award more money to an organization, and they can't award money to an organization that the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee did not approve money for. So there are a lot of stipulations on that money and no guarantees of what organizations will be funded. So just with that background.
Yeah, and we, we haven't looked at the lodging tax. I think we need to get into the details of the Arts Commission's plans to determine how much of their potential expenditures would be appropriate for a request to, to the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission.
Councilman Henderson?
May I ask a question in regards to that? So on the, I didn't interrupt him. On the arts, I was going to ask you actually about that tomorrow, Kelly, but since it came up, then I wanted to talk about that. What would that fund be for? Because I remember that we voted in an arts commission just to kind of draw some ideas and bring that before council. Are they now going to just draw out ideas and then go to town and implement them? Or do they get paid? Or how, how do they spend that money?
They're advisory to the council. The mayor's involved in the arts commission meetings, so.
Yeah, I'm just their, kind of their liaison. But no, everything has to come before the council before, it has to be approved by the council. It can't, they can't just take the money and go off and do whatever they want to do.
So what would the, would the, it's just basically allocating it so that there's a budget? Or is that the intent on that? Or, because couldn't we just pull it from a, should it come up a different fund? Or is it just so they know what to work with?
So they know what to work with because they have different projects that they're looking to do. And their project's very similar to what you and the other committees have actually mentioned, the other council members have actually mentioned. Excuse me. So that's what they, that's what they're looking to do. You know, they, they have been working hard, putting things together, and actually meeting with Anacortes, meeting with the Arts Commission over there, who actually kind of worked through the same process. That's where they got the idea. So that's why I brought it forth, see if it's something that would work with the council. I don't know. It just seems like it's, it's having an arts commission, the economic benefit that comes from that, the way that it can really build a town and build the morale within a town and bring people into a town. It's phenomenal. It really is. And you don't have to do too much research and reading to figure that out and to re, and to see that that is true. That's what they want to do. They want to do this for the city. They want to do this for the citizens. And they want to work with you all. So, yeah.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So as somebody who was the editor of the Anacortes newspaper for a couple of years, I saw the tremendous benefit to that town, however you do it, with promoting the arts. I mean, the Anacortes Arts Festival is one of the top festivals in the Pacific Northwest. There are famous artists that lived in Anacortes. And people, people literally, there's tourism in Anacortes just to check out the, the art scene. Their, their, their youth art program is one of the best probably in the country. And, you know, so however you fund it, however you go about it, what it does is it, it's a feeder. And executives, for example, who are looking where to locate a company, they'll look at the schools, they'll look at the quality of life, and they'll look at arts. Because, you know, that, that is important to their, their employees as well. So however we do it, having some kind of arts promotion in town, I think is a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I, if I may just continue because I was, which is fine. And I think I, I interrupted Alan to reach in touch base with that one. So I apologize, Alan. I will give that back to you. It was that we had a lot of ideas generated throughout the committees and through the council. We didn't get any of those actually moving forward. And then we had, let's do an arts commission to kind of do some of these ideas or get things going. But we haven't actually met, or seen anything the arts commission is doing. And I know that we were kind of steered or focused towards that we're legislative, so the ideas should be maybe not there. Or I think we're, we can have ideas, it's just not going anywhere, right? So I think it's good to have a lot of ideas and engagement. I think people even elect people to, to go in there and, you know, do some change and make things happen and put some ideas forth and get things going. So I do appreciate that, and I appreciate the Arts Commission for doing it. But it is one of those things where do we need a full, you know, budget? Or can they just bring ideas forth and then kind of have a good idea? Like, here's the list we're working on, here's what the costs are. And then we're like, oh, yeah, let's move forward with this one or this one. And we would already know the cost allocate before they do too much of a deep dive.
Right. And really, 10,000 isn't a whole lot. I mean, I, what was it, the, that Rotary gave to the museum to do the sign? And just to do that sign, which looks amazing, by the way. That was expensive. And was that about 3,000? Wasn't it 3,000 to do that? I thought that's what they gave you. They gave you more? They have a whole lot of different projects. So anyway, yeah, so it's not cheap. But yeah, but I hear you. Thank you very much. And I can take that back to them. That's good feedback. Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Sorry, Alan. I'll make it quick, I promise. While I appreciate the arts, as somebody who likes to put beautiful things together as well, such as our new signage and different things, grant funding, service clubs, nonprofits, when we're looking to potentially raise taxes, and I'm looking at our budget, I see a lot of places where there's a lot of wants, but we need to focus on our needs. And although I, I think they probably do have wonderful ideas, I know that the council has come up with some really wonderful ideas that never went to fruition. I just think $10,000 right now is not a good use of taxpayer dollars when we do have nonprofits, we do have grant sourcing and service clubs that we can look to, to help provide art and maybe encourage them to step up. So I would not be wanting to fund that right now with, there's a lot of things I don't want to fund within this budget because I think we need to be really responsible with our monies.
Councilman Henderson?
All right, thank you. Moving forward to Fund 115, City Council Strategic Reserve, we have $101,000 appropriated for '24. Can you tell me, can you tell me where that money's going?
Let me pull it up.
2008 GO Bond Fund 205 and Parks Facility 101.
While she's looking that up, just random trivia. Burlington's population estimated 2024 is 10,400.
So that goes to pay off the debt of City Hall. We've put additional 10,000, or $50,000 to pay off that every year so we don't have to continue to pay interest off that. We haven't, I don't believe we included that going forward as the interest rate on that, that debt is in comparison relatively low compared to what our current investment interest rate is. Although that is, you know, will potentially change over time. And then we used, the council chose to use some of the reserve in the last budget to cover the Parks and Facility Fund. So it is just a straight transfer to that, to that fund, to fund 2024 expenditures.
Can I clarify on that question? Was that to 2025? You were doing another $50,000 out of the reserve?
No, it's 24 appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I don't know if the, the microphone picked that up, that that was 2024. Just want to make sure.
Okay. Anything else? I see your lights on, Council.
I can, I can keep going for about another hour here if, if we'd like. So now on to 189, the ARPA Fund. 2024 appropriated $776,000. 481 of that's going to the general fund. Can you tell me what that's for?
I don't have our plan in front of me right now, but I can get you that information. We do have a ARPA plan in place, so that's all documented, and I'm happy to share that. We are going to talk about that in a future meeting, what we're going to do with our ARPA money. We're going to make some, some changes before the final approval of the budget. So we will be talking about that in detail as well, but I'm happy to provide the ARPA plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a couple I added to my list from tonight. Fund 118, the National Opioid Settlement. Do you remember what we were spending that on? Like, I know what it needs to be for, but where we were spending it?
We have not spent any of that money yet. We're due to have a conversation with council. We continue to have settlements come through, as you all know. And each one has a little bit of a different dispersment method. But yeah, we are anticipating conversation with you. In fact, we've anticipated the potential to spend some money out of that fund for a K-9 purchase. That was a conversation we had previously. Possibly for Drug Task Force, which is later on this agenda as well. And we're required to have a process for being able to receive requests for those funds. And one Washington MOU has got a pretty extensive list of potential uses, but the bottom line is, one way or another, they all have to be opioid related.
And I do have a note from when I was going through the budget with Councilman Henderson that I, we actually have the wrong dollar amount in there. When we were flipping through, I was like, oh, that shouldn't be $21,000. That should be seven. And it correlates with the revenue in the general fund or the expenditure in the general fund. So we have a general fund expenditure for $7,000 if, if we need it. And then the corresponding transfer in from the opioid. And it should be, this right here should be 7,000. So I have that a note to correct for the, the next time we discuss the budget.
Okay. Councilman Burns?
Just one more for tonight. Street lighting, 103. I see we allocate 153,000. Is that just maintenance that we're doing? Or are we adding lights each year?
Bill, if you're still online, you want to pick that one up, street lighting?
There we are. So I think, start video. Okay, so that's really a combined, if we have, for opportunities to expand the street lighting in the downtown central business district area that council has expressed interest in doing. And it also does relate to streetlight maintenance as well. But right now, we don't have any developed projects for new street lighting because we're still trying to vet that out. We've had a couple of conversations with, with council in the past about it. But what we need to do is strategize and, and develop where our potential projects are and which ones to fund. And then, and then that's the source of money that would come out of it.
Okay, thank you.
I am going to put it out to council. Maybe just a couple more questions. We're going to continue to talk about the budget. We do have another hearing, another hearing that we're going to be needing to do, public hearing. And I think that's on the 23rd. So simply because under new business, we do have six items that we do need to address, plus we have executive session. And it is 10 to 8 right now, so.
I just have one more for Kelly, Madam Mayor.
All right.
So, and it's, maybe it's a little bit of a statement, too. So there's a lot of stuff in the budget that we'll be going through tomorrow. I'm hoping, you know, not just in the general fund to see where we can like, kind of conserve, be very conservative, but like a little bit of out of all the funds, right? If there is an emergency, we can't just take from this fund and pop it over there or whatnot. We can loan and borrow and stuff. But it would be cool to see, you know, savings accounts for each one. And I think we can do that from what I'm looking at, and even what Councilman Burns said about the streetlights. We had brought that before the strategic planning, and it was about 90 grand for four lights or so, which at the, at the moment, we're like, oh, okay, yeah, back off from that one. I mean, we can't afford that. That's a lot for lights. So if we don't have things like that in the budget, we should be able to shave quite a bit down just to see like, okay, where, where are we with what we need to do? There's a desire to replace old tools. You know, it, when do we need to replace the old tools? Could they wait one more year? Could we, you know, just conserve this year, see kind of what happens, actually get a bit of a bank account and then, and then kind of move it? And there's a pretty large amount for chemicals, for office supply chemicals. It says it's because, or inflation went up. It's like a 64% increase. These are just thousands of dollars, you know, for multimillion dollar budget. They just, you know, they're not going to do a lot. Arts Commission at 10 grand is not going to do a lot. They're just drops in the bucket. But enough drops, we can... But enough drops, we can end up with a little bit of a layer in there. And that's kind of what I'm hoping to see done. So I do appreciate all your, all your efforts on that. And thank you guys very much.
All right. Thank you. One more question, Mr. Henderson, and...
So can we, it's a public hearing. Charlie, can we make motions in the public hearing, or?
I believe you can. Nikki, any concerns with that?
No, I don't have any concerns about that.
Okay. I just had a question, and then I'd like to make a motion. My question, Kelly, is on Fund four twenty-five, the Stormwater Operations. And twenty twenty-six appropriated, we're showing a deficit in that account for forty-two thousand dollars, and I'm trying to find why.
Yeah, we focused on the general fund and some of the special revenue funds in our management kind of review of the budget. So we are going to go over the utility funds, so all those that Woody has presented on the screen. Right now, all those four hundred level funds need additional scrutiny in those funds by management and continued analysis of the revenue sources in those funds, depending on the outcome of the utility rates with council as well. So Bill and I, Bill Bullock and I have had discussions about these funds and making plans to make adjustments for these in the next read of the budget.
Okay, thank you. In, in the nature of us saving money and us trimming as much, getting as rid of as much as we can with the, with the looming solid waste rates increasing, the sewer rates, those are looming increase. I, I really feel like there are some things that we, we just need to take off the table right now out of this budget. I just, I just feel like we can just get them off right now, move on, finish this up and get it passed by, you know, December. So I'd make a motion for, that we take two of the positions off of the table for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And that would be mayor from part-time to full-time, and that'd be H R analyst from part-time to three-quarter time.
So is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Madam Mayor, may I ask, how much is the moving mayor part-time to full-time? I have it in here, but it's not coming off the top of my head.
I do have it.
Do you? Thank you.
So when we estimate, when we estimate for, because that would, the major, the major thing is benefits. So when we estimate for benefits, I generally take the higher number. So what it would cost for someone who has themselves a partner and two dependents on. So with the increase in salary and that higher benefits number, the increase in twenty twenty-five would be about seventy-one thousand dollars. And that's salary, you know, social security, Medicare, retirement benefits, medical benefits. That's like all encompassing, not, not the take on pay.
Does the, so does the hourly amount that's already basically, and I know it's not hourly, so that doesn't change. If it's thirty-five part-time, you go from part-time to full-time, then it's seventy a year. Is with the projected mayor?
Citizen Salary Commission sets the council and the mayor's salary every year. So that would be determined by the Salary Commission.
That's what I was wondering. I think, you know, with all of the increases that we're seeing, you know, the medical insurance going up seven percent, all the rates of ten percent, fifteen, sixty percent. I would be down to see that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have one. I supported having a full-time H R because of the liability, and I would support moving this up. I understand that's not where many of the council are at. I do share some concerns with the, the time on changing anything with any elected official status that doesn't restart at an election. But I would be willing to have that conversation with Nikki and what kind of legalities go along with it. But I do strongly support anything we can do with H R to help ensure that the city is covering all of its liabilities and making sure that we're covering everything we can with taking care of our employees properly.
Councilman Cox?
Yes, I, I think in terms of, I listened to the mayor, and I, I imagine this is a full-time job. And I think the mayor does some great work, both promoting Seidra Woolley throughout the community. And, you know, those meetings are important. Some of them are very important. And if you're not sitting at the table, they, they don't take you seriously. And that said, I do have some concerns about any elected official having their salary increased during their term. I think the more appropriate manner to do that, it's just like if we, us council members, if we said, oh, let's all give ourselves a raise. Well, you couldn't do that until your next term. And so I think the same, same sort of theory with the, the mayor. But I would encourage us to look at the possibility of going to a full-time mayor in a few years. Or like Councilman Lavaca said, we might not, you know, be able to encourage folks to run for it. On the point of the H R position, I'm a little torn on this. I firmly believe we need the additional, probably all the way up to one, one point oh. However, I do believe that we had reached a consensus for point five. So I'm okay with not going forward on that either.
Yes, go ahead.
Where I'm coming from in this is that my biggest concerns are, as far as the mayor from part-time to full-time, is that the people did base their votes at the time as an elected official and changing in the middle of a, a term. I don't believe it would be the correct thing to do. And I think that that could be something that could be brought back up before the next, the next term. In regards to H R, we just voted for that and just put that through as part-time. I think that we should continue that as part-time and look at that, you know, we can relook at it again in the next cycle. But in the, in the light of, of trying to trim some stuff and keep some things running, I would, I would be behind that as well. I also, to be, to be very fair, would pull the maintaining the assistant planner. Not because I don't believe that that person's doing a job, but that person was hired based on a grant for a specific project in doing this, in being a part of the comprehensive plan, and it was funded in that way. And so there are current funds to fund that individual and that position. Not the individual, the individual could change over time. The position itself was provided by grant money that, as a city, we knew was not going to exist after the fact. And so I think that when that, when those funds run out or when we get closer to that, we can, we can reassess it. But for the time being, remind me, the, the funds are still good through twenty twenty-five, correct?
I believe it's through the middle of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
That's roughly when our grant runs out.
So, I mean, that, that's always something that can be brought back up and, and dealt with in an amendment, if that's something that would need to be done. But it was never, the, the position itself was never designed to become a full-time position. It was always propositioned as a grant-funded position. It was where, was what I had heard in that. And so that would be my reasoning as well for currently not supporting to, to maintain that position until we know where, where that's going to lie. Because once a comprehensive plan is done, and that person, that, that position is no longer handling that, then what, what is that person's tasks going to be? Where, where does that line lie out? And what, what, what then is the workload to be handled? That's my two cents.
Can I add something? How long has the person been point five H R?
You mean point two five?
Point two five, right.
It's, it's been a few months. Kelly, I'm not sure if you recall exactly.
Well, it is point five.
It's point five, okay.
Point five, yeah. So, you know, so we could have the possibility of doing a budget amendment if you guys had some more time and maybe could come back to us and say it's, it's desperate, right?
It is desperate, but yeah.
Yes, we could do that. That is definitely a possibility.
It just seem, I, I, I agree with Councilman Burns. I think it is, I think there's enormous liability if we don't handle the H R appropriately. I think I've told this story. I owned a, I had three partners, and we owned a company with forty employees. And the senior partner died, and he did all the H R. And so the other two partners, me and the other guy, did all the H R. It drove us crazy. I mean, you know, you have to go in, like, somebody has some sort of court order against you, they got to pull it out of their, their pay. So we hired a full-time H R person for forty employees. So I'm sympathetic. I just think, I agree with the concept of giving it. I know you're desperate. I'd say just give it some more time and consider a budget amendment.
Okay, so if there are no more comments, what we have is a motion on the table from the budget. The mayor from part-time to full-time and the H R analyst from halftime to three-quarter time. Motion was made by Henderson, seconded by Kestie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. And the opposition is, thank, is Joe, Councilman Burns, sorry. All right. So with that, we are moving on. I'm going to close public hearing. And we are going to move into new business because we currently do not have any unfinished business in front of us. So the first thing on the item for new business is the inter-local agreement. It is the Skagit County Interlocal Drug Enforcement Unit Task Force. So with that, I believe, is that you, Charlie, or Dan? That's you?
That's me. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is really just an updated agreement with, with Skadoodle Task Force. Really not much is changing, other than adding Oak Harbor into the, into the group. What, what kind of came out of this was this, this added Oak Harbor, and it added an additional funding option for, in case the task force is not funded fully anymore. Right now, they're funded through September of twenty twenty-five, adequate funding. And I, I know Chief Deputy Tobin Meyer has spoken with you. And that's kind of where it stands. He does a really good job at gathering funding. But this is a contingency where it's shared through all the agencies in this group to provide a certain percentage of, of money to the task force should they not be able to fund that supervisory position within that group. Our portion of that, it's, it's very limited, seven percent. And that's kind of based off of the, the calls for service and demand in this group. I think most of the focus is in Mount Vernon at this time. But it's, it's beneficial for us as a group to be a partnership of this. And we did have a detective in that group in two thousand, for three years since he had been promoted. And he's back on our department. We just haven't been able to fulfill that position quite yet. But we're committed to being in this partnership. I think overall, it makes sense for the overall good of this community to tackle drugs, gang activity, because they, they do a lot more than that, just that. They do special investigations. So I think this is a great partnership. I want to continue with this. I don't foresee us having to pay the seven thousand dollars anytime soon. But I think there is a valid point that if, if it does go, we don't want the task force to fold. We want to be able to tack and hold people accountable who are bringing drugs into our, into our county, into our area and our community. And it has a, a big impact on, you know, fighting, fighting the fentanyl crisis and, and, yeah. I, I think overall, this is, I really support this. I know it's a first read, but I think we're also trying to get this moving forward. I, I don't have any problems with this. I think it's doable. And I did have legal check it over to make sure everything seemed all right.
Any questions for the chief?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
First, I appreciate what Drug Task Force has done, and I think seven thousand dollars would be a small price to pay if the grants did fall through. I noticed a comment on here, next to Oak Harbor Police Department, there was an and, and somebody just put San Juan going to join. I thought I saw somewhere else on here that they are a part of it. Are they considering adding an officer as well, or?
I don't know that for sure. I don't think they have anybody on the team at this point. But inclusively, you want every partner involved in case they do happen to join at some point. And I think this allows everybody to put a person on there if they do have the manpower. I think they're, they're dealing with the same thing we are, is vacancies and manpower. And so it makes sense to have everybody involved. So when they do get up to full staffing, they are able to provide a body if necessary.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I, I fully support this. Fentanyl is the scourge of our society right now. It not only breaks apart families, but it also contributes to our homeless problem, our crime problem. So I fully support this. I don't know if I was on council, but somebody from the Drug Task Force came in maybe six months ago, and they said something about them seizing three hundred thousand things of fentanyl. I mean, that's terrifying that this amount of drugs are in our community. And I, I applaud your efforts, and I'm fully in support.
Go ahead, Councilman Henderson.
I'd make a motion, authorize Mayor Johnson to execute the inter-local agreement with the Interlocal Drug Enforcement Unit Task Force.
I second that.
Okay. So I have a motion, I have a motion by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. But Councilwoman Kestie does have a comment she'd like to make?
I was, I was just going to say that I was a hundred percent for this, and thank you for everything. And I was going to make the motion, so I'm very happy. Good job, guys.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. All right. And moving on to the final acceptance of the pavement and pedestrian improvement project. This is Contract twenty twenty-four P W three. Mr. Bullock?
Good evening, Council. So as council knows, we had a very successful pavement and pedestrian construction project that we completed this summer. Primarily, we did a full overlay of Reed Street north of Highway twenty and also Portobello Avenue were main full overlays that we performed. And then we had over forty-seven ADA ramps and then also a variety of sidewalk improvements from damaged sidewalks and some R, R R F B crosswalk installations. This project's now physically complete. One of the very notable things to say about this project is it was completed about fifty-six thou, a little more than fifty-six thousand dollars under the construction bid budget. So that was a very notable thing to, to also point out with the completion of this project. But with that, as I said, this project's physically complete, and we are asking for council to make a motion to accept the project as such.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilman Cox, seconded by Councilman Henderson to approve final acceptance of the twenty twenty-four Pavement and Pedestrian Improvement Project Contract twenty twenty-four P W zero three as constructed by S R V Construction of Anacortes, Washington in the amount of one million, three hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-one cents, which includes sale tax. Any more discussion or comments?
I just had a question about the sales tax because in both of these, both of these here, it says including sales tax, and then it said including sales tax, question mark.
Okay. Can you answer that, Bill?
Oh, I'm sorry. Part of this, most of this, there was only a small portion of this funding that was subject to sales tax because most transportation expenditures are exempt from sales tax. And so I don't, sorry, I'm not catching where the question mark was on, on that. But basically, that's what it's referring to. There is only a very small portion of this project that was subject to sales tax, and that's why that parentheses note is in there.
Director Conca?
I, I think it's just because our format is done as recommended action, and then we have issue. But generally, we write the issue as like, should council move to approve as a question? But generally, we write the issue as like, should Council move to approve as a question? And it's basically just rephrasing the, the motion as a question. Should you make a motion to approve that? That's,
So it was an oversight to remove the question mark, is what you're saying?
It, it just depends on how you phrase it.
Well, the whole thing's one long question. So I, I get it now.
Okay.
Yep. Sorry, I had to look for the question mark in my packet right in front of me. And that, and Kelly, and Kelly is correct. The, the issue is phrased as a long question as opposed to a statement. So the question mark is not sales tax if applicable or something like that. It's just simply a question.
Okay, so.
Instead of a period.
So we have a motion by Councilman Cox, seconded by Councilman Henderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. And then moving on to the professional services agreement, this is amendment number seven. Mark E. Crest Architect Final Design and CM Support. Mr. Bullock?
Thank you. So CM Support stands for Construction Management Support. So we're getting ready to bring the Olmsted Park Project out to bid in January. And so Mark Crest Architects is our architectural firm that's gone through the design of this project since the beginning. And so really what we're doing, part of this last amendment is to provide that construction management support. So if there are requests for information that need any redesign or questions about what the design intent was for the contractor constructing the project and change orders of port, different things like that, is what this is intended for.
Any questions regarding that? If not, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Lavaca. And the motion is to approve authorization for the mayor to execute contract amendment number seven with Mark E. Crest Architect perform our final design for the CM Support Services in the amount not to exceed $64,000 and extend the term of the contract through December 31st, 2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the temporary moratorium, the electricity storage and/or generating projects. And we have Mr. Glover doing this.
Hi, good evening again. I believe our city attorney had asked Council how they felt about having a moratorium on this. And I jumped in and said, well, some of the questions that came up in our hearings or in our meetings were, how does our industrial code? What, what, what is, what's in our industrial code? Does it allow for these types of things? How close is that to our residential area and so forth? And at the same time, I know that we are in our comprehensive plan update process and we'll be looking at our development codes and zoning as a part of that update process. So I suggested, well, maybe we can do, you know, two birds, one stone and place a moratorium on receiving applications for energy storage, battery storage facilities until we've had a chance to take a look at our comp plan and our development code and see what we need to adjust there going forward. So, and at this point, I don't have the answer to that cuz we need to dive in and take a look at that. This would be for six months. And Nikki, correct me, but I think you can, if at the end of six months are not, we're not done with that process, I think we can extend it.
That is correct. You can extend it.
Okay, good. And so six months from now is April and I think that we were talking about getting a draft comp plan to you in March, knock on wood. But then we also need to take some time to take a look at development regs. And I think that's why the grant went all the way through June of next year. So we've got some work ahead of us. But I thought we could hang our hat on a moratorium because we need to take a look at our development code and comp plan.
And we will, we'll need to hold a public hearing on this, which you have listed in here.
Yes, that's right.
And that'll be at the next meeting.
On the 23rd, that's correct.
Right.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Everybody sort of mentioned this. I did talk to the PSE guy by phone. And what I told him is, you know, it's ridiculous to try to cite a battery storage facility on farmland next to a salmon stream. It's just ridiculous. But I said, why don't you, why don't you put stuff like that at the Port of Skagit? I mean, isn't, you know, industrial areas are more appropriate with land. That said, I can't think of any of our industrial sites that aren't pretty near housing. Which to me makes it more imperative that we do have a moratorium on our industrial sites just to prevent them from coming in and saying, no, you have no choice because we're gonna go through this state agency that gives no local feedback. So I, you know, if we can make it work, I'm a big fan of it. I know Watcom County did something about a moratorium not on ag land. I don't see why we can't do a moratorium in, in our city.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. Councilman Henderson?
It's fine. Okay. Thank you, Thomas. I agree with Paul and the fact that if we start having these go into even our industrial areas, that's gonna, that's gonna be bumping up on what we're trying to do in our comp plan with, with doing those intermediate areas in the mixed-use commercials that are bordering our, that are bordering our areas. The question I had is, you said we can extend this moratorium or we can do it again?
Yes, that, that's correct. And it's a temporary situation. I mean, it's a temporary, the moratorium is temporary. So we can set it for six months. That's the maximum amount, amount that we can set it for. And then, like I said, if we need to continue cuz we're not done with our analysis, we can extend it another six months.
And then another six months if we had to, right? Like?
Yes, if, if we were, yeah, behind the eight ball there, yeah.
Thank you.
And Councilman Burns?
Well, you covered part of my question. Some of the language might have been a bit more over the top. I'm guessing it's because of requirements for the moratorium, like public emergency exists, that statement. Okay, I was assuming.
That is, that is to make it effective immediately. You can't have a, an ordinance take effect immediately unless you call it an emergency.
But we are required to have another hearing on this at the next meeting, is that correct? So we couldn't do it today anyway?
Yeah, that would be a, a public hearing to allow comments.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So, Thomas, I'm wondering, is there a certain amount of power output that we're looking at? I mean, it is clear that it says battery storage, but then it also says generators as well. And I believe Sedron has taken the challenge of developing a Vulcan unit or an Omni processor unit that processes sludge. As part of that process, there's a steam generator that's built into the unit. So I'm just wondering if somebody had, I think they've already got all their stuff figured out, but if somebody had something like that, a, a steam generator, generator development, would this prevent a company like that from doing?
That's a good question. This, this, the way it's written is only concerned with utilities that involve the storage or generation of electricity.
So it'd be a utilities, for the purpose of a utility company? I think the way it could sound is like generating, so if you're in the business of developing new technology for like generating power or redeveloping old technologies, steam engines for, for generating energy, would that, or do we need to be a little bit more clear in there?
So right now, it's for major utility development projects that involve the storage or generation of electricity. So, you know, from my perspective, these would be big things, like we're gonna put up wind turbines, or we're going to put up a dam, or we're going to do a project that involves the battery storage systems. It's for major utility development projects.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for explaining.
Okay.
There are no more questions. Do we have a motion?
I thought we had to have one more.
Well, this is a motion to approve temporary moratorium of approval of the project involving storage and/or generation of the electricity. Motion to hold a public meeting, meeting on October 23rd, 2024 regarding an ordinance on projects involving storage and generation, generation of electricity.
I'd motion what you just said.
I'll second that. So I have a motion by Councilman Henderson and who said second? And second by Councilman Cox. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Looking forward to that public hearing on the 23rd. Okay, moving on then to Property Tax Ordinance 208024. This is the first read, so no action is recommended. Go ahead, Kelly.
That's correct. Thank you for clarifying. This, we did put this together before we received the final amounts from the Skagit County assessor. So there will be adjustments based on the, the counter, the county assessor, assessor final numbers. So what if you wanna go to the document? I just put together a document and this kinda goes over what we have already discussed. And then some, some new elements as well. So I won't go over all of this in detail, but just wanted to have something you could take away or come back and ask questions with. This is the inflation and property tax graph we showed at the, at the last budget meeting. Also have in here a brief description of how property tax is calculated. And again, I won't go over this in detail, but if you ever have any questions, please let me know. I kinda gave the long, more complicated version because although it seems straightforward, it's never quite that way. And then I gave the, the short answer, which we talked about at the last meeting. That property tax is actually calculated first, the council approves the budgeted levy amount, which is made up of the prior year budgeted levy plus any new construction, plus one percent, which would need to be approved by council. And that equals our budgeted levy. So what we collect in property tax. And then the county takes that number and divides it by the assessed value of all property in Skagit County. And that's how we set, that's how the levy rate is set. And then that levy rate is used to assess for each individual home in our jurisdiction. So before I talk about our 2025 budgeted levy options, is there any questions about how property tax is calculated or any of that data?
Can you touch on the bank's capacity and what that means?
Yes. So currently, the city has no banked capacity. So I'll start with that. But banked capacity is based on the highest lawful levy. So if the city doesn't take the one percent in one year, we don't, we don't take it. The next year, the one percent is calculated based on what it, what it would have been if we had taken the levy. So you can take, the banked capacity is kind of the difference between that, what you would've, what you would've been able to, to get the one percent and the one percent without that. That's the banked capacity. So if, can, can you scroll down a little bit? We'll give an example for 2026. And I did update this from when it was sent out in the packet. I only updated, I accidentally included twenty-four, twenty-four and twenty-five reference, when it should have been twenty-five and twenty-six. All the numbers are the same except for those. So if you scroll down a little bit more, so we can see those bottom three tables. So the 2026 table right there shows what 2026 would look like if we took the one percent in 2025. The bottom table in 2026 there shows what it would look like if we didn't take the one percent in 2025, but we did take it in 2026. So the, you can see in both charts, the one percent is the same because it's based on the highest lawful levy. But what, but what you, what your levy amount is, is different by $48,000. And part of that has to do with the bank capacity. And hopefully that kinda makes sense, but it's,
It does, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Kestie.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, last time, you were really great and you put up there about the senior, like, or the exemptions. And just every time that this comes up, just remind people that, that that is also available to them. Push it on social media and, and get the word out there as well cuz you did a good job last time, so. And although Tony will not be here this year, just tell us about it. There will be others.
Councilman Lavaca?
You got a good eye for blue lights. Really, on it every time. I was just wondering, I know that the last few times that this has come up, there was a lot of confusion about how much it would be. And I think we even went around in a lot of circles and math and all that stuff to kinda come to the point that it was gonna be about $26, right? Right? And we, we, we have a hard time conveying that number, what it's gonna be on somebody's bill to the, to the constituents, to the citizens in this area. And that way, you know, when we're talking about a property tax, if we're doing a one percent, then this is what it's going to affect you, the, a month or a year. So if we do move forward with this, I'm just advocating that we just get down to that simple dollar amount rather than going around a little bit of loops and just go, hey, listen, this is gonna increase your, your tax if you have a medium cost $500,000, $26 a year or something. Thanks.
Yeah, we are gonna have a public hearing at the next council meeting. And that is one of the questions I had for Council is what data you would like presented at that meeting. We didn't bring that today with this packet because we don't have the final numbers. We have, since this came out, gotten the final numbers from the county. So we, you can see there, we estimated new construction for, actually, can you scroll up just a little bit, Woody, to see that top table? Yeah, you can see in new construction for 2025, we estimated at $65,000 of new construction. It's, it's really just a, it's really just a guess. It's really hard to know when any of our new construction is gonna hit the property tax books, or at least it's hard for me to understand that. So in this preliminary budget, we put out an estimate. We did get back from the county that new construction is gonna be $141,000 in 2025. We won't know about '26, so that'll still, that'll, that'll always be an estimate. And that'll be an estimate in this budget process, but did wanna provide that. And we can provide some of those examples of different home values, assessed values, and what the seagull woolly rate will be. We can't, I don't, I don't know about other jurisdictions, but we can talk about the seagull woolly portion of property tax.
Councilman Burns?
Kelly, when you include the calculations for what people pay, could you pick a house around $500,000? I think that's probably a reasonable number for what the current values are going to when you calculate that. You do other layers if you want, but I thought that would be a nice number to start off with.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
I like where you guys are going with this, as far as, as far as making it like understandable to, like, me, the homeowner, right? Like when I, when, during the public hearing. I mean, maybe it's not a good idea to use a real person for, for the example, but like, that, that would be very helpful for people to, like, understand the magnitude of it cuz it, it is confusing. You know, property taxes and stuff like that. Now, is that, so your variable's the new construction? Or, or we do have number from the county that it's 141,000?
In this, in this, these numbers, the variable is new construction, but we do have that number and it's 100, 141,000 and some change. But the, really the variable is, once we have that number, it's whether the council wants to approve the one percent. That will then become really the only variable after we adjust this for actuals.
But will there be one? But will there be one, another variable based on what the assessor values our properties at?
The assessor has already assessed all values. And we actually got a email from the county assessor. And he's planning to come and speak to council on November 6th. So he can answer a lot of those questions, a lot more questions. But individual homes have already been assessed. That's how they get the value for all of the, all of Sejro Woolley jurisdictions. So once we set, once we set our levy, they'll take our levy amount and divide it by the assessed value and then get the levy rate. And then they'll use that levy rate to apply it to your, your home.
Thank you.
Maybe this will be explained by the auditor, but the, the tax effect from the school district to Port of Skagit and the county, are those already in or are they still working through that?
I assume that the, when the, when the county assessor sends it to us, that we're sending it to all jurisdictions. But we're probably all determining our budgeted levy at the same time. So we won't have their, we won't know what their budgeted levy is. But we can take, what we did last year was take an example of a couple of properties at varying different values and showed what the Sejro Woolley assessed, or what the Sejro Woolley property tax was for 2024. And we can show what it would be for 2025 at those varying levels. But we can't know about other jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Kestie?
So then, you know, when you get to see the breakdown of it and you see what the schools are asking for, and then you see what we're asking for and what we use that money for, and the services that you get from that, are you allowed to put this, what the schools are asking? Like, could you pull up a chart so it shows how little we are asking? And I think that that would help people see the whole picture, maybe even next to it. This is what you get for this little bit that we're asking for.
Yeah, all of that, though, that data, that kind of picture I think you're talking about that we presented at previous meetings, I pulled that from the county website. That is publicly available information. And so I'll pull some examples. I won't put people's names and addresses associated, like Henderson mentioned. But yeah, we'll, we'll definitely show, show the Sejro Woolley's portion of someone's total tax bill.
Right, because I think that if people could, even if you put that out there along with the exemptions and things like that, people might start to understand. And the more information that you get out there, because a lot of people don't come to the meetings. And so the more we can push out there for them to see, I think it'll be really beneficial.
Yeah, and just a reminder, I know you said, you know, not a lot of people necessarily are watching, but you can tell constituents that if they have a reduction in their property tax, that the, the city can use that to give them a reduction in their utility bill as well. We don't need them to provide that same information. We can rely on the data they provided to Skagit County. And I know the assessor has talked about that a lot as well. And we'll probably bring that up in his presentation to you as well.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing more, then we will move on to the last item of the night before we go into executive session. And that is number six, the Economic Development Action Plan. And Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. This item is a item that's been pending for a while. It's been in the Planning and Business Development Committee. It did come in front of council. You saw it briefly when we did the council goals a few months ago. But the committee's been working hard on this since, since last year through a variety of conversations with economic development partners and businesses to really get input and try to figure out what the priorities might be. This initially started as an effort to try to really guide our ARPA funding investments. And we've got an allocation, like the council's had an allocation for those investments of 300,000. And we've allocated about 140,000 to the Community Development Grant Program. And the other 150 remains undetermined how we might spend it. So that's part of the thinking in developing kind of this, this list of priorities. And my thought on this would be, if this were to be adapted by council, one, it's helpful for guiding those priorities and guiding our economic development efforts overall under that council goal. But it's also helpful for our comprehensive planning efforts to hand it off to the consultants doing the work on the economic element as additional work that's been done in this area with our partners, really, really trying to combine plans and ideas and thoughts. And so the committee, Planning and Business Development, passed this out unanimously at their last meeting. And we're bringing it before you. And again, these are ideas that came really from partners and businesses in our community. And, and additional input from the council committee members and a little bit of additional input from staff, at least in terms of, you know, what items can be handled? And you'll see it sorted by, there's some coding there, but what things could potentially be operating budget items, what things could be, would likely be more comprehensive plan oriented? And then what things it might depend, depending upon how far into it we would like to go. So you'll see those items there and they're sorted. The council committee has worked through trying to prioritize the different items that we might take on as these priorities. And you'll see number one priorities under business friendly permitting and housing development to provide a larger local workforce and to further support local retail. And then there's some second tier priorities on downtown improvements, state Route 20 and state Route 9 corridor improvements. So some transportation improvements, improving the cleanliness and visual appearance of commercial areas, including downtown also being in there. So a little bit different than the direct downtown improvements. And that's just one bullet item on that. And then gauging and creative place making, also a number two priority. And doing further work with economic development partners, also a number two priority. Supporting infill, commercial and housing development, a number two priority. Continuing to partner regionally to benefit the regional economy, which will also benefit our economy as a number two priority. Continuing to partner with the Port of Skagit and Skagit County on the continued redevelopment of the Swift Center. So basically the Swift Center as a number two priority. Supporting enhanced tourism is a number two priority. And there are bullet points under these as well. Also under number two, citywide public infrastructure development. And then a third tier workforce development where we're really supporting others doing the work more than taking it on as directly. So that's a quick summary. Could turn it over to the council members involved in the effort if they have further comments.
I'd love to, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, Charlie. So when I first got onto the Strategic Planning Committee, one of the big things was, and I think I mentioned this even on the committee or the session before, I wasn't on that committee, but for council member Burns and council member Diamond to reach out to some, you know, business leaders and, and people that are from our community and citizens and bring them to a table and just have like, hey, let's have a private conversation and discuss some stuff. That kind of manifested into the next term and we ended up doing it as a public meeting. But all of these are pretty much from that forum and other forums. So it's not so much of the committee necessarily drawing out these ideas. Not that the committee doesn't have good ideas and the, the other committees weren't good ideas too, but it was drawn out from them. So it was a nice way to get a, a view of the, the ideas from business partners. And, and, you know, I think we had attorney here or judge. We had just a people from a lot of different places, which is kind of nice. The thing that caught my eye was the interest in the community from sure from all of them. And it was very collaborative on that discussion. But seeing that same thing kind of reflected a bit in the surveys, the surveys that went out for the last public meeting that we had. And there was about 127 that fed back into that. And so when I go through those kind of things or public comments, I look back at this and see what that small pocket did and see how it relates to the larger pocket. It's definitely interesting. There are things on here that, you know, I think I'm going to go up to the top right there to the priority one. And it was, you know, invest in a better permit process. And that was coming from a couple of people. And I think that, you know, even though it's a few years old, is what's already in, in the forefront right now. Different types of housing, I think that's kind of, the comprehensive plan is going to dictate a bit of that from what I understand because there's the housing ban now. So it's not so much that, you know, I think, and we had a really good meeting at one point that said, hey, let's not have apartments all in one area. Let's spread it out. Let's do this. We had a good strategic planning meeting from the whole council. And we kind of laid out our view of, of what we would love to see the Sejro Woolley city's landscape look like. But now with that housing ban, I think that's even going to be affected with, with that. So just throw that out there. Love to hear feedback.
Councilwoman Burns?
I was very happy to help put together those meetings with local business owners and leaders of our community to help us get a better understanding. All the council members in the committee, as well as Charlie, kind of branched out and started asking people to, to show up and discuss what they liked, what their concerns were, help us get a better idea of where they hope to see the city of Sejro Woolley go in the next few years. So council member Lavaca is correct that a lot of this came from these meetings. We did tweak it over the time after that, try to condense it and make it a little bit more of something the city can actually follow through with. And I think, oh, apparently I'm not talking into the mic enough. I think we've done a reasonably good job of condensing that into something that can be processed by city staff. And I'd be interested to hear what the rest of you think about, about what we've got.
Councilwoman Kestie, did you?
Thank you. I just have a question about the parklets. And I, it says items in purple are completed. So is that because we had a general consensus that we were not for them?
Yeah, and we, we adjusted the code to reflect that.
Okay.
I just want to, I, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just want to say, I think this was excellent work and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Okay. There was no motion needed, and so.
I think there are items that you guys, if you get a chance, you know, go through it and mark off or put a comment and say, yeah, I mean, we, this was a long, long list from a lot of people that we just kept refining. And there were things that the city has nothing to do with, like, you know, and even I, I would love to see it happen, school partnership programs with businesses so that we can get job training going on. It's not really a city function, though. So great ideas, and I thought all the input was really nice. But we have refined this quite a bit. So yeah, go in there, see what you think and, and take out.
Go ahead, Council.
Oh, I was just going to say, there's quite a bit of stuff on here that actually, in my opinion, would be allocated to the Chamber of Commerce. And so I'm, I'm wondering, you know, how much of this could just be conveyed to the relationship there and, and what they're actually working on here? Because the resources, I mean, that, that's where a lot of the economic development and promotion of the, the town should be coming from in that way. That's the purpose of them, is to, is to be that driving force to keep businesses going, bring businesses in and, and marketing for that. And so I'm just wondering what the consensus is in discussing with them in regards to how this plan was laid out.
We definitely had Monique in to talk to us about a couple of the things that we had on this list. We kind of went over it with her, if I remember correctly, at least at the state it was in at that time. And I would be interested in seeing, once the council's decided if they agree with the things on this list, approaching her again and saying, hey, these are the priorities we have for the city. And, you know, these are the things that are probably more appropriate for the chamber to be taking on, but we, we'd love to see these things happening in the community.
So it sounds like you still would like a little bit of discussion on this. It sounds like, Councilwoman Lavaca, you were making the suggestion that people take a look at this and then bring back suggestions?
At least on this, by the next session, if there's no email back, if there's no marking, which I think this has been out there and that opportunity's been there. Some of the stuff, the cities, basically we're saying, yeah, we like the, the path forward. It doesn't mean we're going to go out there and actually do this stuff on all cases. Some cases, easy to do, paint a light post, yeah, help beautify. City has some responsibility with making our city look good. And we've been doing that since the beginning, since I came on, wanting to see an archway or, or better roundabouts or better entry ports or better signs. I mean, that's all something that we do actually want to have a little bit of input with. If you, if you just, you know, delegate that to, you know, a different body, then we might have an effect on our city that we might not exactly be in agreement. So that's the pathway forward.
I would agree with the archway in the sense that, in, in, to be honest, that was brought up in, when the Finance Committee, when I first got on here and with the Finance Committee had their meetings upstairs, that was a project that Councilwoman Kestie brought up as something that, that she thought would be great. And, and actually came with ideas and possible funding and, and all of the works. But it didn't, it didn't go anywhere at the time. And so it is something that has gone through and I, and been discussed. And I think that there is support for that. And it'd be great to actually see that done and, and point things in this way and, and make it visually attractive. So, I mean, there's some, there's some very good things in here and things that were, have been brought up for the last several years that I've been around. And I'll, I'll take a deeper look in here. I just, I think that there's a lot of stuff on here that's, that's the chamber's responsibility, not the city's in regards to specific business development stuff. And then just some feedback from a few business owners that I've talked to in the fact that we have our festivals or we have our, our street events and that sorts of stuff. And people really do like them and some people come into town for them. However, it does not drive or increase numbers at the retail stores that are in town. And so they, you know, they actually said that, that, yeah, they keep the doors open, but they're, they're losing overhead on those days because nobody's actually purchasing. They're not coming in for that and their clientele, there's no part, the parking's not there, you know, all the, all those good things that they would use to drive their businesses. And so those days bring people into town, but they don't necessarily support our local, all of our local businesses when we do that. One of the other things I noticed in the last couple of years is, is like the Halloween Kitty Parade and the Christmas Parade, we love that, right? It brings a ton of people into town, but the last several years, there's less and less businesses actually participating. In fact, I went downtown and what was promoted on social media was that there was a whole bunch of people there, right? Because you can take snippets and make it a highlight reel. But the hard reality was, I walked through it myself and there was a business here, a business here, two cars down here at the end, and then, and, and the museum was open, right? Like, so there was not very many people there. And there was a bunch of kids saying, where are the businesses? Where did this go? I talked to a few of the businesses and they said, we would love to do that, but one, we have our own families. And two, we have to pay somebody to be out here after hours to hand this stuff out. And so the businesses then are making their decisions as to whether they stay open and do that. And there are key, key core companies on Metcalf Street that were not open, supporting these events. And so, I mean, just my personal walkthrough and observations in the, in the stuff that goes on, it's like, okay, well, if we're going to do those things, whether it's the chamber or the city or whoever's going to be in charge of running those functions, really needs to work with getting those businesses on board because then you have people coming into town thinking there's this, you know, big event, there's something going on. And it's, it's really not much there. And so, I mean, just, just some feedback there between what's actually, what's promoted and looks good on one side, but the reality when you walk through it is, can be two totally different things. There's, I mean, there's several other things here, but we can, I can talk about that later.
All right, thank you. So Councilwoman Kestie?
When I, I appreciate all the work that you guys have done for this. For me, looking at something like this, with what Councilwoman Diamond is saying, I think it would maybe be easier if it were set up a little bit differently, where it's like you, you want a dog in the fight when you're maybe making something. So you're, you're saying it and listing it. But maybe then list that as something else other than our, like, you know, what's the word, collaborating with blah, blah, blah. That's a goal that we would like to do and this is where we would like, rather than it's our, what we're doing. Because I do agree that some of these things seem like they would be chamber things. So maybe if you just listed it a little bit differently and then the ones that we can actually bite off and chew up at the top, like the permitting and things like that, that we have more control over, maybe that would be an easier read for it. That's just my suggestion.
I just had a quick question. Where was the, I think it was before I got on council, where was, is, was the arch proposed in town? Or is there a location for it?
Oh, it wa, it wasn't, it was the, the railroad trussel over. Oh, it wasn't, it was the railroad trussel over Highway 20.
And turn it, like decorate it?
Yeah, yeah, just, just putting some signage or something and it was discussed in, in, in that at the time.
Perfect location, yeah.
So it sounds like you all then would like to bring this back on the 23rd, is that correct or am I misreading you?
Yeah, this is the first read, bring it to the council, see what they think. It's been bounced around in, in economic development for quite a while. So, you know, after that, it gets chewed up, spit back out and put in front of Charlie, we got what goes in front of chamber, what's, what kind of, it's, I guess that's even more of a survey for the chamber too. But for the chamber to know, yeah, this is something the city does support you guys taking on or doing as well. And I do agree with the, you know, business opportunities, things like that. There's stuff that we can do as a city to help our, our businesses and especially our small businesses grow. And like you're saying, I think Lager Rodeo brings in a lot of business, obviously. Our parades end up, you know, being exciting, but yeah, some, some things might not be as much for sure. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Councilman Burns?
Question of the council from this, sorry, Charlie. Is this something we should be asking Charlie to separate out, some of the things that he thinks are probably more appropriate for the chamber to be doing and see if you agree with the list or do you want to go line by line yourselves?
Whatever's helpful, I think, whatever you want.
And I guess I should rephrase, instead of chamber, just the community as opposed to the city. Would that be a more logical way to do it?
If Charlie can identify action items that we can take, that'd be helpful.
Yes, I can do that.
That we as a council can take, that'd be helpful.
It will take a little bit longer to do that, but I can do that.
Because there's things in, like in the economic development stuff, there's things in here that, I mean, would they go into public works even? Because there's a lot of stuff here about, you know, improving the appearance of roundabouts and talking about exploring connectivity of, of parks in, let's see, improvements to complement State Route 20. Working with properties to improve entry into town, you know, into town. I mean, some of that gets kind of sticky too, because you're actually talking about people's private property and then the city investing in that. And I would think that there would be a conflict of interest in that, being that we have a whole community and, and there's, it would become very specific in, in that and it would not be available to all private property owners. So I think that there could be some, some stickiness that, that falls into that. So while it might be a wish list, we also tread on the rights of the private property owners. And so I think we need to be careful in what we're saying.
A lot of what you said would be public works. There are a variety of different departments that would be involved in what's here. And yeah, certainly, some of the first items you mentioned, they're more direct, like the city could just do this, whereas other things are going to require collaboration or very delicately putting together some kind of program that would allow us to do, try to do something that is aspirational.
Okay. And I think there were just, you know, some clarification of stuff, like creating a more dog-friendly city, but, I mean, development of additional dog parks, I'm not, I mean, that was kind of a discussion that we had at one point where we have one, we also have other parks, we also have sidewalks that people can walk, I mean, and the last conversations I had, I mean, just looking at our comp plans and stuff, we were talking about the size of properties and that sorts of stuff and how in certain areas there are, people do have what would be considered more adequate sized yards to take care of and maintain their animals as opposed to going to dog parks and all of, all of that sorts of stuff. And so I just, I just question, I guess, where some of this stuff goes for clarity.
Yeah, I would advise to keep in mind, we have a strategic fund we haven't used for years. It goes to bills.
According to the budget, there's zero.
No, no, there's 157 something like, or that in there.
Right, and that's no longer funded.
It's no longer funded, but the money is still in there. So the, there's money in there that has been drifting away from, I think it was a lot more, it was like 400 or a lot more.
It was 300 and something.
And it drifted away and all we use it for is to pay right now interest for the loan.
It should be used for projects.
Well, we're using it for that purpose of just like, hey, we need more firefighter stuff, we need to pay off this interest, we're doing this. It's not being funded, like you said, because we don't use it.
Right.
And so the city doesn't really transform too much. If we do have some small resources, not a lot of amount, large amount of money, but some to help beautify, offer a grant to people that have broken down fencing on nine, their fencing's wood, it could be beautiful, maybe they just don't have the money. Could we offer a grant for ports of entry, things like that? So I would just advise to keep in mind, there is money in there and with the resistance or the, I guess it would be a constant resistance of beautifying anything or putting any of those resources back in versus going just to bills. I agree, let's pay the bills, but we have seen our complete strategic fund depleted and we haven't done one project. Let's keep that in mind. So, and that's why it's not funded anymore. So the council doesn't have any funding to even throw out these ideas or to do it once this is gone. So even if we used 50,000 of the 157 that's going to be going, what little we have left, that's going to be going to bills, we know, that 50,000 that the city's entrusted to us, what we could use to somewhat beautify. So not everything on this list and obviously there's going to be a lot of things that are going to be community support, but with the support of the council, of the city saying, yeah, that's a direction that's, that's encouraging, right?
Okay. All right, well, we'll have Charlie bring it back. You're going to be on vacation probably right up until the next meeting, right? So...
Yeah, I'm going to bring this back in about a month.
Okay, in a month, all right. Okay, very good. All right, with that, we are going to move into executive session. This is a discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation, RCW 4231101I. What do you think, Nikki? How long do you think we need?
Five minutes would be just fine, I think.
Perfect, okay. So it is 8:57 and we will be back here at about 9:02 or 9:03.
I'm quiet tonight.
Yeah, very quiet, very quiet. Love the pictures though, those are very cool.
I just thought you might enjoy them.
Yeah, yeah.
My mom's still down.
She's still.
Yeah.
I take it you got that all.
I couldn't even see the approval scrolling down.
I wanted to give a copy of what they wanted to do.
Change the addresses and purposes and the building next door to me over there. You can change to Eastern Avenue. Well, that's still up in the air whether it's Eastern Avenue or not. And if you put, put in Eastern Avenue there, it ends at the warehouse, but why don't you put barricades stopping traffic from the library? Does the city just pay that? Or is no contractor who says they can do that? That belongs to, that belongs to the rail. And I was told to go take a hike by the person down there. He says, yeah, I know your record, blah, blah. I mean, I can show you pictures. That was a private spur at railroad property. The deed, 1910 states it as an opportunist. And the city's just run me over and the traffic shouldn't be coming through. That is not part of the library property. Now, how, how do you deal with that? I've asked like public records requests. The answers were, we simply do not have what we seek from the deed to that property. And what was their inference? I don't remember it. We don't have what you seek. So the city has no record of ownership of that and I do. And it is taken. I can show you on the phone pictures and everything, you know that. Now, and, and I'm sure, see, you've gotten a picture from the people in the past, from me, I'm sure of that. You haven't made your own opinion of talking to me. And you will, it might not be good for me. You stepped into something when you took the position over. Nothing you created. Anyway, nobody's researched, looked into it, just done. Sorry. Eastern Avenue was legitimately legally on the other side of the tracks. Somehow it came to Eastern Street. There's no, there's no documents of them ever approving. I've looked every, every, from 1890 all the way to present. Who made Eastern Avenue, or Eastern Avenue into Eastern Street on the other side? Anyway. Yeah. I don't, I mean, I've asked for an answer, I give none. Yeah, except I've asked for public records requests, I give no answers. Run me around. So I keep asking. I ask different positions. So that's why your records goes away because there's no openness to it. And then if they get arrested on the railroad property, the city has no jurisdiction over that property. I have underlying rights to that property. It's an eastern. Saying that Eastern Avenue next to it is an eastern or private spur. Anyway, I think you probably bite me in the butt for talking to you about it. You guys work for me too, besides the city. You protect me too. Thank you. I was talking, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
In for another two minutes till 9:09 roundup.
Yeah, I mean, how much of that, probably, I can't do that.
I'm going to try to be honest with you, I don't know anything about.
Yeah.
Yeah, he didn't know about that. I got him the paperwork and took it to him because he was trying to get his, paying his bill. I said, you can get your bill stuff down here as struggling. He says he got eaten once a day, so I don't know.
Was that last year then?
Yeah, I haven't seen him. He showed, senior sent him once in a great while and I had not seen him.
I haven't seen him for a long time.
You know, I helped him get the paperwork so he could his taxes lowered and everything. Yeah, I hope nothing happened.
He usually would come, he was teaching Bobby how to run the old cigarette fire engine. He was a firefighter. City council member two brought that engine in. He had an engine smart. I think he's had it solved.
I'm not going to hold you up, you guys going to follow?
Sure, take it back, Ray.
There you go.
I know, yeah.
I know, yeah, it's echoing out here. Okay, we are back. It is 9:10, and there were no decisions made. With that, I am going to adjourn. Everybody, have a nice evening.